Welcome, everybody. AGP, we're live. I'm looking at the monitor. Welcome, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, April 14th. Welcome to our regular City Council meeting. It's located here at the Veterans Memorial Hall at 6:00 PM. The location is 209 Surf Street here in Morro Bay. Welcome. For the record, all council members are present. We do have a quorum, and we'll call the meeting to order. And if you will please start by joining me in a moment of silence. Thank you. As we move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, we're going to welcome our new Sergeant Porter. I'll turn it over to the chief, and maybe we can have Sergeant Porter lead us in the pledge. Chief?
Just before we start, I'd like to say a few words about Sergeant Derek Porter. He'll be promoted in the next couple of weeks, and he'll start supervising his shift on our weekday side of the week. We're very proud of the work that he's done with Morro Bay. He's worked here for a year and a half, but he's been a police officer for more than 14 years. He served as a sergeant in Farmersville for five, and he's here with some of his coworkers and his wife Shelley, and we are just so proud of him. Take it away, Sergeant Porter.
Actually, if I just add that Chief Christie organized a very well-done selection process. There was a board that interviewed how many candidates?
Six candidates.
Six different candidates. Robert Davis was on the board, the police chief from Cal Poly, the assistant chief from Paso.
Paso Robles PD.
Yep, and so it was a tough process, and Sergeant Porter was the standout of the process and gets the promotion. Well deserved.
And the first big gig.
(inaudible)
Thank you, Sergeant Porter, and congratulations. And with that, we'll move on to the closed session report. We have no reportable actions from our closed session meeting earlier this evening. We'll get on to the mayor council members' reports, announcements, and presentations. And I just wanted to make a note that if you haven't, I know I received my water rate notice in the mail, so there's some literature going on about the water rates. And I know our city manager is going to make some comments on that. And any other comments from announcements from the council? Christine?
Well, just that I survived, and it looks like everybody else did too, the yard sale weekend, and I just wanted to recognize what a fabulous job everyone did, but also to recognize individually, I've heard a lot of really great turnout, but a lot of our nonprofits also had sales, and I think that that's something that we sort of forget is an opportunity. So I wanted to recognize that thanks to all those nonprofits who collected items and volunteers and got out there to also raise money for a lot of very worthy projects in the city of Morro Bay, and also just a giant shout out to Morro Bay, beautiful, and all the organizers of that event. Thanks.
Thanks, Christine. John? Noah?
Just briefly, did want to follow up on your comments about the water rate notices. And this Thursday at the Public Works Advisory Board meeting, there's going to be a conversation item basically focusing on that. It'll be the third time the water and sewer rates are discussed at the Public Works Advisory Board. So that'll be this Thursday here at the Vets Hall at 6:00. They'll be talking about an update of the water rates, kind of reviewing where we ended up and what is the decision before the community here over the next month. And also, Mr. Leavick, Public Services Director or Public Works Director, will be talking about water conservation and what the latest actions within the state mean for Morro Bay. So it should be a very interesting Public Works Advisory Board. And then we also have our notice out for advisory board vacancies that we're looking for members to sign up to be a part of our Citizens Oversight Committee for Finance, our Tourism Business Improvement District, and also our Recreation and Parks Commission. There's vacancies on all three of those. And if you're interested, you can go to the city's website, and on the right-hand side of the homepage is all the details with the application and so forth, or you can contact our city clerk, Dana Swanson, at 772-6205.
Thanks. And that'll conclude our announcements and presentations. Mr. Buckingham, did you have any further comments on the water rate?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Iron. So if I could, I'd like to give the first of what will be several around the community public service announcements about the water rates and sewer notice. So all Morro Bay water and sewer customers should now have received notice of the intended rate increase. This increase, as Councilmember Smucker just alluded to, has been vetted four times in the last four months, twice by the Public Works Advisory Board and twice by the City Council. If we don't raise rates, here are some of the things that will not happen. First, we will not meet our state water contract obligations. We do not have the funds to meet our obligations without raising rates. Second, we will be unable to rebuild our wastewater treatment plant and unable to move toward water sustainability and independence. And third, we'll be unable to fund the operational and capital components of those two systems and still maintain adequate reserves. So speaking water rates specifically, why do the water rates, why must they increase? There has been no increase for 20 years. We cannot meet our legal requirements to fund our water debt or our water, the requirement from the state water contract unless we raise them. Actually, there has been an effective 30% reduction in water rates over the last 20 years, and we currently have a $900,000 deficit this year in the water fund. So if you look at the chart on the right there, the blue flat line represents what our rates have done over the last 20 years, and the red line is perhaps what we should have done if we had raised rates gradually with the cost of, with the Consumer Price Index, the CPI, and with other costs of providing water. And the unfortunate blue line at the end that goes up steeply is what needs to happen over the next five years so that we can meet our obligations. On the sewer side, why do we need an increase there? The existing wastewater treatment plant is 62 years old, and it must be replaced. Right now, we dump between 850,000 and 1 million gallons of treated water a day into the ocean. That is almost, that represents about 85% of our total use of water. So that water that we're dumping into the ocean right now should be, it will be reclaimed and reused so that we can begin to reach water independence or at least sustainability. So the sewer plant transition is an essential step to getting off or reducing our reliance on state water. So what does this move do? This raises the rates the minimum amount essential to meet those previously stated requirements. It roughly doubles the rates over the next five years, but that is the, it is a minimum essential amount in order to meet our requirements. It gives our council the ability, with proper notice to the community and with a majority vote of the council, to approve a temporary surcharge for extended use of our desalinization facility, if that is required, and to approve temporary water shortage emergency rates. What this does not do, it does not allow for passing on any substantial increases, increases greater than 5% of state water contract costs, without a vote of the people. So we are in a position where we are required to come back to the community. Essentially, if we were, if the state were to have a significant increase in state water costs based on the new infrastructure that is envisioned, we would be required to come back to the community to consider raising rates again. And if you're exceptionally bored on Wednesday or Thursday when the Bay News comes out, you can read this week's article, which addresses our water supply and notes that we really would like to get off of state water, and we have the opportunity to do that over the next decade. And that's it.
Thank you for that report. And now we'll move on to public presentations, which this week we have no presentations. We've been pretty busy up till today or this council meeting, and usually we've been having a couple of presentations. So with that, we'll move on to public comment, and we open our public comment with our business spot. And our business spot this week is Fabulous Finds. We have Ms. Betty Forsyth coming up, and I know you've got a crew behind you for support. Welcome, Betty.
Thank you. I am Betty Forsyth, citizen of Morro Bay, and thank you, City Council, for having businesses showcase themselves to you and the community. Fabulous Finds was selected as the name for our ministry at St. Timothy's Church because after reviewing many entries, it appeared to the committee that it must represent our mission to have people find fabulous items for themselves or their family, and also to help our super people, the seniors and students. Our fab items, our fab team is headed by Father Ed, our pastor, Babette Maloney, our pricer, Mary Hay, our webpage guru, and myself, Betty Forsyth, the manager. We welcome all shoppers by informing them that we are nonprofit, all items are donated, and all workers are volunteers. That's why we wear the apron to show we're volunteers. We also tell them the money goes to St. Timothy's, and not for trips to Hawaii, but for our mission, seniors and students. For our mission, seniors and students, we save money by not having a phone, not accepting credit cards, and by limiting expenses to rent and utilities. All money earned goes to our S group, the super people, students and seniors. All money earned. So even if I have to buy a cup of coffee, I pay for it myself. We sell collectibles below appraised value. We have vintage items for upcycle and household needs at low costs. If we don't have it, what you're looking for, we have a wish book, and we will call you if the item comes in. And with the donations that we get, we usually get the item in. We do do estate sales. We accept donations during business hours. We do not do consignments. We are located at 480 Morro Bay Boulevard near the Bay Theater, and now we're very excited that we will have a new store, Fabulous Furniture. It's called Fabulous Finds Furniture at 739 Napa. We will have a soft opening Friday and Saturday of this week, April 17th and April 18th, at Morro Bay Boulevard and Napa Cross. So the store is right behind our store where they drop the donations, so you'll be able to find it. You won't miss us. Our store hours will be the same, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And volunteers are always needed, so call me at 805-459-5704. Watch our Facebook, Fabulous Finds, and come down and find your fabulous find. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Betty. And with that, we'll open public comment.
I have to say something about Betty because she's so wonderful. Dr. Betty here. So, but.
Father Ed, welcome.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, mayor and council. Thank you. And I also, but my real purpose besides supporting Fabulous Finds is to thank the people who came to the busting of the fleet yesterday. I don't want that event to go by. It's an annual event, and so I want to thank you. We do it about the same time every year, in April, so I just want to remind you that it will be on the calendar for next year, too. You can check with the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Father Ed. Anybody else? Okay, public comment is now open. For anybody who'd like to speak to items not on the agenda, public comment is open.
Thank you very much. Ken Vestefeld, proud resident of Morro Bay. Two upcoming events here this weekend is the Emergency Vehicle Car Show, which is sponsored by the Morro Bay Police Department, Fire Department, Harbor Department, and all of the different agencies that come here for this weekend. We have people from Nevada, Santa Barbara County, North Counties. It's just a wonderful free event. It's one of the two events that I'm going to support this evening. It's alcohol-free and family-friendly, so these, it's going to be police, fire, military, FBI cars, cars from LA County. So just a wonderful little thing to either bring your children or your grandchildren. It's a great thing for the kids to be able to get in these vehicles, and sirens are going, and the Cal Fire usually brings a big apparatus, a big bulldozer. That's just an awesome event there. So that's this weekend. Friday night is a Code Three cruise, starting at the Front Street parking lot and going down the Embarcadero up to Marina and back over to Carlos for participants-only, a social event. And then on April 30th through the May the 3rd is our Cruising Morro Bay Car Show. We are fast filling up. We're probably going to have maybe around 550 registered cars plus 60 people from Carcraft Magazine who have chosen this to be one of their annual events to attend to. So it's another alcohol-free event, brings an awful lot of people in town. Some of our vehicles start arriving on the Sunday before the event, and then more people come in on Monday, Tuesday, and then, of course, on Wednesday. So feel free to come. No charge to visit there and all that stuff. So truly appreciate being involved with these events and the support of the community that does that. We are looking for trophy sponsors again this year. Unfortunately, I have to have them in by this Friday, so if anybody wants to contact me, vesties, V-E-S-T-I-E-S, at AOL.com, or give me a call. If you just commit, no problem. We don't have to worry about the paperwork. I'll get that letter from you further. And one thing, because I have to leave because my family from Texas is in town, building moratorium. Wow. It's kind of disappointing to feel that people want to stop building. They already have, actually. I've done that. And to put a moratorium, you know, I've heard some people before, I don't know whether they're connected with this or not, that said, "We do not, this want to become a Carmel. We don't want this to become a Santa Barbara." Building moratoriums and view sheds will dramatically drive up the cost of living here. Along with our rates that are going to have to be raised for water and sewer, it's going to become very expensive here. It's one of the highest cities right now to lease homes here in Morro Bay. Thank you very much. Have a good meeting.
Thanks, Ken. Public comment is open. If we could, if we can hold applauses and just, you can wave hands in support, that'll kind of keep the meeting going. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robert Davis. I live in Morro Bay. I want to add, head on to Ken's presentation. The Morro Bay Citizens Bike Committee and San Luis Obispo Bicycle Club are teaming up this weekend at the Emergency Car Show to promote bike safety. We're going to set up a table, and we'll have bike maps, safety tips, ride schedules, signups for free bicycle safety confidence courses. We'll have Jelly Bellies and coloring books for young people. And for everyone who comes by our table and signs a safety pledge, a bike safety pledge, we'll have a free water bottle. Says Bike Safely, Morro Bay, California. Absolutely free for signing a bike safety pledge. So that's Saturday, 9 to 3, Emergency Vehicle Show. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Good evening. Roger Ewing, Morro Bay resident, and I'd like to take this time to address item D1, if I may please. We currently are in a very severe drought. I don't think anybody fails to recognize that. But we also do not have long-term, sustainable, reliable source of water. And until this drought ends, I think it would be a mistake to continue issuing permits for residential construction. We are all conserving as best we can, as much as we can, and I think it would be unfair at this time to continue issuing permits, to continue inviting water users to Morro It's, as I said, it makes no sense. We need to look at reality, and it's not a pleasant sight down the road. Morro Bay is not alone. The whole state, the whole region, is suffering for a lack of water. So please, find the courage, have the will to do the right thing, and that's issue a moratorium until we have water. It was done 30 years ago. No great tragedies took place, and we're still here. So have the will and find the courage. As long as I have a moment, I'd like to also address one other item, and that is to lend my support to Alex Beatty, his attempt to try and put an end to hunting in the Back Bay. The Back Bay is not today what it was 40, 50 years ago. It is surrounded by residential. It has tourists, kayakers, and boaters, and it makes no sense to allow hunting in a national estuary in today's world. It's very difficult to promote ecotourism with shotgun blasts going off overhead. So please, get a hold of Fish and Game. Let them know the time has come. The change is happening. We need to put an end to hunting in the Back Bay, and I thank you all for listening. Have a good meeting.
Thank you, Roger. And for those out there, public comment for items not on the agenda. I know Roger contacted me, said he couldn't stay for the later item this evening, so thank you, Roger. So for those of you who can't stay, there's some flexibility in speaking to those items, but this public comment right now is for items not on the agenda.
Good evening, mayor. My name is Ted Demont, and I have an item that is not on the agenda, and it is the Bayside Cafe. Two Thursdays ago, at the Harbor Advisory Board meeting in this very room, over 200 people came. 200 people came, far more than are here tonight, to beg and plead for anyone who could do anything to save the Bayside Cafe. This place was packed, standing room only, and without a single dissenting voice, the crowd asked for nothing more than for a continuation of the current management. For them and for the thousands more who couldn't fit in the room, I request that this council do everything it can to find a way to keep the current operator of the Bayside Cafe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Anybody else for public comment? Welcome, Dawn.
My name's Dawn Beatty, and I live in Morro Bay. Greetings, everyone. I attended the 10-year budget forecast study session, say that fast, held a couple weeks ago, and was saddened to hear that the city's fee permit revenue has decreased dramatically in the last decade, recovering only 30% of public services' total cost. Although lowering the fees didn't have the intended effect, I'd hate to see these fees go up in one chunk, even if it is over a number of years, much like the water rights are being proposed to do. Something needs to be done, but 30% recovery is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Any comments from council? Christine?
I do have one comment. I was wondering if I could ask Chief Knuckles at our Fire Department if, I was wondering if I could ask the Chief Knuckles about, we talked about the emergency vehicle show. Will we have anything new at the emergency vehicle show, or did you want to talk about anything new in Morro Bay and emergency vehicle? Thank you.
You bet. Counsel, Mr. Mayor, thanks for allowing me to talk about our new ladder truck that arrived. We are going to have some type of press conference very shortly with the Trust, trustees of the Trust. But the good news is that Morro Bay has received a gift, is in quarters at Station 53, a brand-new 75-foot ladder truck. It will be on display at the EVS Show this weekend with a large flag hanging from it. It will be in service approximately 30 to 45 days.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Seeing none, thank you for public comment. Thanks for all those attending. Jan, thanks for bringing us the business spot, as always. You do great work. Moving on, we have our consent agenda. So any items on the consent agenda? There's a public comment. If anybody'd like to speak to this item, public comment is open.
Good evening, mayor, council, and staff. My name is Susan Stewart. I'm a resident of Morro Bay and a business owner. Wanted to address A9 on the consent agenda about developing the advisory committee for the new LCP and general plan update. I realized, looking at it online, that it looks like the last one was written the year I moved here, which was 1988, so definitely needs a little update. I was interested in the committee makeup, 12 members, two from council, one from P-WAB, one from Harbor, one from Parks and Rec, and one from Planning Commission. All makes sense. Curious about why there isn't anybody from tourism, which may make sense, but it would be interesting to hear it addressed. I can sort of see, looking at what the general plan and LCP incorporates, perhaps that's not relevant, and at the same time, things that are happening in tourism in town impact the community and vice versa. What kinds of plans we make for the community and the kinds of structures and restrictions going forward, that may be relevant. I would also really hope to see some members from the business community seriously considered, especially because we have a lot, primarily, I would say, small businesses and independently-owned. So not so much big business corporate stuff, but get some input from especially some of the longer-established businesses. Also occurred to me, and I know this may sound ageist perhaps, but I think it's relevant to find some of the folks who have lived here all their lives and are maybe in their 70s or 80s, maybe had grandparents living here, bringing some of that history to the process, to where we've been and where we're going. I feel like that's really important. Even looking at former elected officials, you know, we're really, it's kind of cool that we have a lot of former mayors, former council people living in this community that could bring a lot to the table, having gone through the processes before in original, and then perhaps some of the updates that have happened. So those were just my comments. Don't know if you want to address them, but I'm excited to see it all happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Any more public comment for items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. Susan, thanks for your comments. Item A9 is an item I'd like to pull, as well as item A4. Any other items from council to pull? So we have items A4 and items A9, and can have a motion to approve all items on the agenda with the exception of I, A9, and A4.
So moved.
We have a motion by Christine, a second by John. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries. Item A4 is a proclamation that I'd like to read and deliver. We have Donna Clipperton and Krista Stafford. I'll meet you at the podium, and we'll present your proclamation. I'll meet you at the podium, and we'll present your proclamation. Thanks for coming. Okay, here we go. So this is a proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And this proclamation reads, and I'll read the proclamation for you and present it. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member in San Luis Obispo; and whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community, as seen by statistics indicating that 1 in 6 women and 1 in 33 men will be sexually assaulted in their lifetime; and whereas 1 in 4 women on college campuses will experience a sexual assault while pursuing higher education; and whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront reality, that 44% of sexual assault survivors are under the age of 18; and whereas we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions; and whereas staff and volunteers of RISE encourage every person to speak out when witnessing acts of violence, however small; and whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is a compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing sexual violence in San Luis Obispo County through prevention, education, increased awareness, and holding perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions; and whereas the City of Morro Bay strongly supports the efforts of RISE and every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, how to start by believing when a loved one discloses an experience, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Morro Bay City Council hereby proclaim April 2015 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Morro Bay. So thank you very much for this, and we have your proclamation. This is your proclamation, Beatty. Would you like to speak a moment on this? Thank you. Please introduce yourself. Yeah, go ahead and please introduce yourself and let everybody know who you are. I'll give you a few words. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Irons and City Council. My name is Donna Cliperton. I live here in Morro Bay, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors for RISE, a nonprofit that serves survivors of sexual assault and intimate partner violence and their loved ones. While we provide domestic violence services in the North County, we are the only agency in the county serving survivors of sexual assault and abuse and their families throughout the entire county of San Luis Obispo. Last year, RISE helped 400 women, men, and children who had been affected by a sexual assault or abuse. We also provided education services and self-defense classes to hundreds in our community in an effort to prevent this crime from happening in the first place. Our vision is to create a world that is free of sexual violence, and that means we have to be aware and take action. We are inviting county residents to participate in any of our awareness-raising activities this month, including self-defense workshops, Take Back the Night at Farmer's Market in partnership with Cal Poly's Safer Program. This year, we are excited to present our 13th Annual Walk a Mile in Her Shoes event in San Luis Obispo and our 2nd annual event in Paso Robles. The Paso event has already taken place. That was on Saturday, April 4. The 2nd event will take place in downtown San Luis Obispo on Saturday, April 25. It will feature live music, a brief program, an awareness fair, and a 1-mile walk through downtown. Please check on our website at riseslow.org for details and registration information for Walk a Mile in Her Shoes. But most importantly, Sexual Assault Awareness Month is about honoring victims, whether they've told their story or not. We do this by raising awareness and destroying myths that make it difficult for survivors to talk about their experiences. Lastly, I would like to thank and acknowledge our staff, volunteers, and fellow members of the Board of Directors for all of the hard work they do in an effort to end sexual assault in our community. They are an incredible group of people who are absolutely dedicated to their work, and I am honored to work with such a compassionate group of people every day. Thank you again for this proclamation. We hope to see you on the 25th in San Luis Obispo for Walk a Mile.
Thank you. Okay. Hi, you're Donna. Krista, okay, Krista, thank you. Thanks very much for coming out. And at this time, I'd take a motion to approve item A4, our proclamation. A motion? A motion by Matt, a second by Dave. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you. Item A9. Item A9 is establish... The establishment of 12-member General Plan Local Coastal Program Advisory Committee. And this one, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Dave Buckingham. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for pulling this item. From the public comment, this was a fortuitous. So the purpose of this discussion is a reconsideration of the General Plan Advisory Committee's staff report and the council resolution. So on further review and with input received since the publication of the staff report, staff provides the following additional analysis and recommendation. So our initial recommendation included in the staff report was, as Susan outlined for us, that the committee have two council members, and then four members from... One each from four of our standing advisory boards, Planning, Public Works, Harbor, and Rec. And then six at-large members for a total of 12. We've got a number of concerns with that. One, is this too big? Or is it too small? So the council is five. The WRF CAC, the Wolf PAC, our Water Reclamation Facility Citizens Advisory Committee is nine members. Why 12 for the General Plan Advisory Committee? And even 12 people, it still won't have expert representation from every specialty, some of those that Susan Stewart mentioned during her public comment. Another concern is our advisory boards. Is this additional workload appropriate for them? Some are already very small. The Financial Oversight Committee, for example, only has one person on it right now. So we're in a process of trying to recruit folks for those. And some of those committees were... Advisory boards were not represented, the T-Bid and Financial Oversight, for example. And then another concern is council representation on the GPAC, the General Plan Advisory Committee, essential. There is no council representation on the WRF CAC. All these things will come to the council anyway. So is it essential to have council members on this committee? A couple of considerations for you. One is the idea of sort of generalists versus specialists. Do we need one specialist from every special area on this? Or is it more appropriate to have more sort of generalists who can reach down into second bullet, into some specific task forces for specialty focus? And also on that first bullet, I'd say, might you almost sort of want futurists? Not sort of, you know, Battlestar Galactica kind of futurists, but folks for whom the future, you know, as we've just celebrated our 50th anniversary, this general plan is really going to set us up for our next 50 years. And so the folks on this oversight or on this advisory committee might be those who can provide special input on our next 50 years. And then second, unless this committee sort of ends up at about 50 people, they are going to need specialized advice. They're going to want to reach down, and one way other cities have done this is to use task forces that support and report to the advisory committee. There's an economic element, circulation element, land use, all sorts of different elements that would be ideal for different task forces of key representatives from those areas. So I think we probably want a committee that's big enough to be representative, but small enough to actually work. So when it gets to be 10:59 tonight, and we've continued a few items until next meeting, and there's only five members on this board, think of what it would look like with 12 members on the GPAC. And finally, perhaps not... We don't see this being necessarily a firm voting body, but perhaps having an odd number of members, they might find that appropriate. So if there ever was sort of a raise your hands and vote moment, it wouldn't be locked in a tie. So here are a couple alternatives. On the top left, you see the current recommendation. Our new recommendation is in the middle, and that is that you don't have any council representation, nor do you have any designated or reserved representation from the advisory committees, but that you do add one Morro Bay high school student to give seven total members on the Citizens Advisory Committee. Now, the at-large members, there's no limitation there, and so they could easily already be serving the city on the Planning Commission or on the T-Bid or in some other form. But essentially, every seat would be an at-large seat, except for the high school student seat, which we think would be a pretty neat thing to consider. An alternative would be to keep it at seven members, to reduce the number... Actually, I just noticed that math doesn't add up. Sorry about that. To add two council members, if you felt it was essential to have council members, and then to have four or five at-large members and the high school student. And then on the right, you just get a feel for what some of those task forces or subcommittees could be that would report to and provide expert advice to the GPAC, the Citizens Advisory Committee, from land use to tourism to economic development, waterfront conservation. Some of those are actual elements in the plan, for example, land use and circulation. Others are sort of Morro Bay-specific, maybe a tourism subgroup, maybe a waterfront subgroup that focused on particular things from those areas. So that is our staff's re-commission. We recommend the middle one there, the new recommendation with six at-large members and one high school student, and turn that back to you for your questions and then your discussion.
Great. Thanks. I think it was a little fortuitous with some of our public comment to address this, and appreciate some of the flexibility on this. And now we can open it up for discussion from any other questions from council. John, do you have any questions to start off with?
No questions, no.
Christine, any questions? Christine?
I just want to confirm that it... Oh, perhaps I didn't read it closely. But this is a Brown Act board? And would these meetings be likely to be televised on AGP?
Yes, and not necessarily. So it is a Brown Act board, but we've had some communication that sometimes those TV cameras tend to cause people to not speak and brainstorm as freely as they might otherwise. Not everybody is created like you, willing to talk in front of the camera. And so there may be good reason to choose... This isn't a transparency issue, but to choose, because of the sort of the brainstorming, big idea work that this committee would do, to choose not to televise those, so that some members would feel... So that all members would feel very open to talk. That is a decision that does not need to be made tonight. It would be Brown Act, and we could go either way on televising.
Okay. But all the meetings would be public? Open to the public?
Absolutely. Right.
Okay. Great. No questions. That's all. Thanks.
Great. I have no questions as well. As far as discussion goes, we've already had public comment on this item. As far as discussion goes, I'll lead off with some of my comments. We already have... We opened it up for public comment. So I was going to... John, any comments on that?
You always have the discretion to reopen for public comment. They may want to respond to what the city manager's proposed.
Fair enough.
But you're not required to.
Okay. And I think in regards to that, anybody like to speak to this item on public comment? May do so now.
[inaudible]
Come on up.
Susan Stewart again. Just one thought on the student, which is an interesting idea, but reading in the staff report, this is expected to be a three-year process. So that's a three-year commitment for a high school student. You're probably going to be looking at a freshman or sophomore. Could be a challenge. Interesting idea, but if you're going to have changeover in the students and getting them up to speed. I have been on some of the advisory boards at the high school in the past, and it's fun, but it's a little bit of a challenge. Interesting idea, though. That's all.
And I just note that that could be... We'd like to get a board in place for three years. There is going to be changeover on that board over three years. Somebody that volunteers at the beginning is going to have to come off. And we could make a conscious decision to rotate a student through every year, have a different senior every year, or something like that. I also acknowledge Susan's joy of working with high school students at times.
Yeah. Okay. Any more public comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, bring it back to council. Thanks for bringing this back to us. Some of my comments and discussion on this, I would agree that the council members probably shouldn't be on there as a decision-makers. I think it'd be easier for them to just be members at large. I would agree that it would be great to have, you know, people from each one of those advisory boards, but I think maybe the strategy is just opening it up, the invitation to all our advisory board members. You know, we pick a number, and all of them can apply, and then we can go through that selection process. I would be open... You know, I think six... The proposal is six, seven? You know, I think, or more? Are we going to lock ourselves into saying we're into this number? Or are we going to be... You know, if we have 15 people or 20 people that show up, and then we think, wow, you know what? Maybe we could do nine. We've got really good people. This has just happened before. So I think I want to understand how we're getting ourselves locked in with this. And what was my other comment? Oh, and the other comment was having people change over. I think the expectation with... You know, I guess this is a discussion item for council, is that it is a three-year process. We might understand that, you know, people might not be able to make it that long, but the expectation is it's a three-year... It's a, you know... It's not a year term. It'd be just like our advisory boards that serve a four-year advisory board. We'd like to have the continuity and consistency of people that are on the board throughout the process. Those are my comments. Would love to hear from everybody else, and start with you, Matt.
Given the magnitude of the general plan and the years and decades since we've had it done, I totally agree with your point of making groups small, that it's just going to be a kind of just weakened form of standing people, and it's just not going to get done.
And it's not going to get done. So I totally see your point, and I totally agree, and I think we're going to be on the periphery in any case in terms of city council. So I think that's an easy one. The high school student, I agree with Susan, but I think also in terms of inviting future state people, I think that's an interesting concept. I would be inclined to do that. And I think also, I agree with you, Jamie. I think the longitude of three years, that's a big commitment, but ever, I think people, when they see the magnitude or the importance of this, they're going to say, this really covers all aspects. So I think I see your point, but I think we could get people that would want to do that commitment. So I agree with... I'm fully on with the smaller, six or seven member, either or, with the latitude to increase it.
Christine?
Okay, great. Thank you so much to staff for retooling at the last minute. Well, I don't know how long you've worked on it, Dave, but for bringing it tonight and to say, you know, it's really great. If something's not 100% working, it's fine to restart and to reboot, so I appreciate that. I agree with a lot of what we've said this far. I would suggest, for some reason, I just feel like an odd number seems better, you know, just because it just... For no reason other than it's true, if you do need to vote, you have that opportunity. So I would go with the staff recommendation of... I would suggest, for some reason, I just feel like an odd number seems better, you know, just because it, just for no reason other than it's true if you do need to vote, you have that opportunity. So I would go with the staff recommendation of six members at large, or seven, and allow everyone to apply at large. I agree, no council members need to be on it, not that we don't bring anything, but it just makes it a little bit clunky. I also would recommend, however, that we have a youth liaison. So I think if we're talking about a plan that's going to be for the next 30-plus years, it would be great to craft a spot, that is a liaison spot, that perhaps has a different role than the actually appointed G-PAC members, but that does allow for that youth voice. And it could be a current, it should be a current Morro Bay resident, it could be a high school student, it could be somebody studying at Cuesta, it could be somebody studying at Cal Poly. But I feel like not to include it, we're missing somewhat of a perspective, and I think it's just a great learning experience for that person. If we have no one who applies for the student or youth liaison role, then we don't have to include it. But I think it would be interesting to have that perspective, and I know that I did see several years ago, on the, blanking on the name, but it was, oh, the New Futures Committee, did have a high school student who served on the committee. Now, was the committee for three years? I don't, I couldn't tell you how long that committee lasted for, in terms of the actionable meetings, but I do think we're missing a little bit if we don't encourage youth to come in, knowing that maybe their role would be advisory, or to report back. It may be something we can work with, the associated students at Morro Bay High, or other youth groups. It just seems to me, if you'd be willing to just maybe carve out a liaison spot, I would like us to talk about that a little bit. Otherwise, though, I'm ready to go as it stands by staff recommendation. Thanks.
John?
Thank you. And I too agree with the majority of everything that was said by the other three council members today. One, a couple of comments that I want to make, I think it's important to really try to identify in some further detail the cross-mix of types of individuals you are looking for through the city. I was just, you know, looking very briefly at the verbiage that we use, and what we really say is very general, that the community is represented, and that we're ensuring that we're including the interests and values of all segments of the community. Not sure what that means, but I agree with that, but if that could be somehow further delineated for us that might be involved in making the selection, that would be helpful. And then two, from a function standpoint, looking at your conclusion on your original staff report, it seems to indicate that this committee is involved with the creation of a centralized advisory body to help inform and guide the update moving forward. So what I read is taskmaster, facilitator, and if that indeed is the role, I'm not so sure that's what we want, but again, I would just try to further identify specifically the types of individuals we're looking for that represent the segments, you know. Certainly, I could think of a few, elderly, not-so-elderly, and young, male, female, et cetera. And so, and two, I agree, council members, no need to put those, us folks, on those, as well as representation from the other entities. And so with that, I think seven, eight, nine, I think an odd number is, seven or nine is absolutely perfect, and if you do find a couple more that might be helpful, up to 11 would be max, in my opinion. Thanks.
Thanks. Noah?
Thank you. I just want to follow up on Councilmember Johnson's comments about a youth liaison position, which I think could be more realistic, considering that there would be some flux likely in that position, and so are you suggesting that we shift that one position back to a member at large, to create seven total with a liaison, youth liaison position that would be involved, but more as an informal voting member?
We could do that, or we could add that as an additional position.
So along with the high school position?
I guess I am thinking, we really won't know how many members we're going to have until our interview day, because it's always what happens to us. We get fantastic candidates, and then we say, well, what about going to nine, right? So I guess what I would do is maybe asterisk the youth liaison position, and have it included no matter what the total number is, but knowing that it's kind of a flexible position, and if we don't find anyone, then we just don't have it, or if, you know, someone emerges, then we go with that. But if it's, if it doesn't fit, then I understand. I just feel as though, obviously, we're reaching out to adults, you know, legal adults over the age of 18, and maybe that's who we end up with on the youth side as well, somebody who's 19 but going to Cuesta. I just feel, because it's the future of it, you know, the future nature of it, I just feel as though that voice might want to be somehow incorporated, but I haven't given a lot of thought as to structurally how we would do it. Maybe staff has ideas, too.
I have some comments on that. I think we, talking through this is great. I think it's very, the concept, the idea, I think is really, really interesting. As, you know, listening to what's going on, I look at it as a kind of a floating liaison position, so, you know, maybe we just advertise, and we get our core advisory committee, we outreach to the Morro Bay High School, and, you know, just as a kind of elective-type thing, you know, we see if there's any, anyone that we can, you know, a student that we can get on, you know, even if it's a yearly basis, and we have some participation that way. So kind of a floating liaison person, and then we just contact the high school as far as, you know, getting some participation there. That would be my suggestion. And then, you know, I don't think I was really clear, maybe on my comments as far as this, but, you know, I understand some of the comments about maybe small, better, having conversation with Eric Meyer, who was the chair of the loose update. Talked with him just last week, and was, you know, kind of go over and over some of this, and having a large committee versus a small committee. And my thought, you know, there's always that debate back and forth, if you have too many people or too little. I would hope that we would get a really good outturn anyway. I would, and I would hope to have nine minimum to be able to deal with. I think six is too small. I think we, you know, we really need, this is a big, big project, and I think as we found with many of our other advisory boards, we just were blessed with some really pretty talented people in our community, and I think, you know, we can draw them, and then really come out with a good outcome, and not have to really be too concerned with having too many people in there. And I'm looking towards Scott, you know, who'll be, you know, managing some of this, but I think, you know, I would hope that our, you know, our outcome for, you know, drawing people would be larger than six, and I would hope we'd get, you know, support to get more towards the nine, the nine spot myself. But those are my comments, both on, Noah, to your comment about liaison or a youth person, and then the numbers, so. I don't know if you have any more comments to finish on?
Yeah, I'll just finish off by saying, yeah, I would agree with that. Building some flexibility into this is definitely important. And to be clear, as we broadcast this opening, that we do intend this to be a three-year commitment, up to a three-year commitment, and make sure that's noted very clearly in the announcement, along with, you know, our intent to try to cover diversity of backgrounds, as Mr. Heading was just suggesting. I think, you know, we'll strive to do that, to make sure the committee's well-balanced that way. I definitely like that the committee's going to be involved with the RFP analysis, and reviewing that for the consultant, and then ultimately recommending a selection of the consultant as well. I think that worked really well with the Citizens Advisory Committee for the water reclamation facility. And I just want to commit to having some form of youth representation, whether it's a liaison position, or a true position, voting member. Either way, I think it's going to be effective, because often when the youth speaks up at these sort of forums, they're hurt, because their voice isn't often there. So I'm willing to build some flexibility into the process and move forward.
Okay. So, Mr. Buckingham, can we distill it all together?
I could, let me just provide some input, and I won't try to distill it all. There's nothing that says you have to have a resolution to form this committee. We brought you a resolution because you asked for one, but you can form the committee without a resolution. Or you could have your interviews, and then form the committee by resolution. One thing you might do is if you had 20 awesome folks come out, you might identify seven for the committee, and one each to lead different task forces. So, and finally, there's nothing in the resolution that says what the term is. We expect this process to be a two-to-three-year process. There's nothing in the resolution that says it is a three-year process. And finally, on the youth discussion, I've just penciled in underneath on those possible task forces, you could have a youth task force, who has a task force leader, who then is the youth liaison to the committee.
So it sounds easy if we just forego the resolution, and just go on this general discussion, and then come back when we form it by resolution, is what I get out of it. I don't know if there's enough nodding heads here or comments.
The less processed, the better, I think, if we can do that, yes.
So perhaps a motion that notes your intent to form a committee, to form a general plan advisory committee, and that's about it on that, and then that you intend to advertise, actually, you've already started advertising, so good for you, and you intend to select that committee in May.
Would it be, do you have one more comment, Christine?
Yeah, if, well, I think we're moving on fine. Before we close this, though, I do want to make a recruitment comment, so I don't know if that's, now is not really the right time, I think we should stay focused on the motion.
We can almost really just say, just repeat the motion that was just laid out for us, so moved, that was the motion that was delivered by our city manager, then we can do that, and then go on with the second, and then any other discussion.
Does that work for legal counsel? The mayor just moved that?
As long as the mayor and council understand what the motion is.
So we have a motion to form a general plan, local coastal plan, citizens advisory committee. We're going to advertise to recruit members of that committee, and we're going to be selecting those members in May. We're not going to get down into how many at this time, we're just going to be recruiting for those at this time.
At which time you will select the committee and form it officially?
At which time we'll select the committee and form it.
So if that's your motion, I would second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second by Christine? Any other discussion?
I do. Recruitment discussion, though, do you want to have it now?
Sure.
Okay. I really missed commenting earlier about former electeds. I was wondering if, from, I don't know, the mayor, maybe the whole council, if we could write a letter to all former electeds, officially asking them to consider applying for the committee? Probably a lot of them have set up here enough of their lives, and they may not be running, you know, to turn in their application, but I think a formal invitation might be something we could consider, if all of you were willing to consider that and talk about that a little bit.
Yeah. So, great discussion. We can go ahead and continue discussion with the motion, and then come back and have more clarity on that?
Sure.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries? Continuation of discussion on letter, you know, I think that'd be great, if there was consensus on council to do that. We can draft letters, and, you know, if it's on the city letterhead, and you want me as mayor to do that, or it can be signed by all of council, you know, that's great, too. You know, I think either or. Any other discussion on that?
As long as there's not a lot of staff time involved, I'm not sure how easily Dana's going to be able to access contact information and so forth.
Any other questions?
Just a general comment, S2, the fact that there, most of the former electeds are very active in terms of watching what goes on here, and I would assume that they would automatically apply if there was interest, and I wondered why a single group was selected out, as opposed to maybe not the high school group and/or another group, and so, and I know, I think the concept that you're thinking about is they bring a lot of good history and a lot of good background, but just from a process standpoint, I...
And I think, you know, I think to add to it, you know, the letter idea concept, you know, the letter, you know, should go to our advisory board members, too. You know, basically, we can, you know, draft that letter, it can go out to former electeds or advisory board members, and say, hey, look, we're looking for folks, and basically, we're just asking for at-large members as a whole, which, you know, doesn't necessarily delineate one or the other, it just says, hey, we're looking for talented people.
I'm good with that.
Okay. So there's consensus on the letter, then?
I don't know if we do have consensus on the letter. I just think it's just a way to capture some folks, but we don't, it's not necessary, and I'm just throwing it out for discussion.
Okay. So I'm cool with doing the letter and having, you know...
The advisory board letter also makes sense.
Yes, yeah.
I don't know if, but I mean, ultimately, we want everyone to feel welcome to apply, so if we feel like it's shutting down that feeling by specifically going after a targeted group, then I understand that, too.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know if it's true or not, but just, it's just a thought, and I do like the addition, if we are going to do that, which I would support, also include the advisory, all advisory committees, and those folks getting a letter as well.
I'm willing to support it, but I think of all of the different representative stakeholders, the youth position's going to take the most time and effort, because they have their own universe that's ongoing, and it's often challenging to get that sort of communication going, so I would hope that if we're putting effort anywhere, that's one that does get the amount of time that's going to be needed to get them involved.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, the ABS is supposed to be coming here, like, three or four times a year. Yeah, I think we should get them back, I agree. Okay, great, thanks.
Okay. Closure, all good? Okay, good. Item A9, then, we're good on our motion. Item A9 is concluded, and I'm just going to shuffle back to my paperwork. That concludes our consent, we're moving on to public hearings, and unless there's any pause to make a adjournment or recess by council, I'll proceed into public hearings. Okay, public hearings. Item B1, resolution number 1415, initiating the proceedings to levy the annual assessment for the Cloisters Park Open Space Landscape and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District. And I believe, is that Mr. Leibig?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you.
As we've seen in years past, this is the first step in the process to, in the proceedings for the levy assessments for our assessment districts. This orders the engineers' report. There's background on how the assessment district was formed in the staff report that I won't go over, but with this action, you order me to prepare the engineers' report and present it back to council on May the 12th. And we have a revised resolution for your consideration that gives a little bit more, one more whereas regarding background, and let me just get to the right program, right app. We've, okay, disappeared for a second. The, one, two, three, four, fifth whereas, we've added after property owners at the time of subdivision of the land. 100% of the property owners agreed, and in this case, and in most cases with subdivisions, it's typically one person, because one owner is subdividing land. This was a corporation, so the corporation agreed to the assessment. And then we added another section after that that states, and this is redlined on your copies, whereas subsequent owners of lots within the subdivision have received constructive notice of the existence of assessment district through real estate disclosures, title, report process, and publicly available records. That concludes my staff report on the Cloisters Assessment District, and staff requests approval of resolution number 14-15, ordering the preparation of the engineers' report in accordance with the Landscape Lighting Act of 1972, which is in the California Streets and Highways Code. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Leibig, and just for council information, I appreciate working with you. I had some comments, and Rob was able to make some adjustment on the resolution, so just a little additional language, and thanks for working on that, and welcome for any seeing none. Noah, John, seeing none. We'll open up for public comment. Anybody would like to speak to this item? Public comment is open. Please come forward.
Greetings, Don Beadick and Morbay. First of all, I'd like to apologize for my earlier public comment. I had no idea that item D2 was exactly what I was speaking about. If I'd read the agenda better, I would have known that. Anyway, sorry about that. I and my fellow Cloisters homeowners are delighted to have Rob Leveck join and lead up our Cloisters maintenance team. The next day, following our first Cloisters quarterly meeting with Rob and Board, who was out fixing an issue that had plagued our neighborhood for some time, that was a sitting, uh, there was some sitting water on the short southeast portion of our development. Did I say the next day? Anyway, the homeowners are duly impressed. Now's the time not to let us down. As Joe did last year, Rob and company are giving the homeowners time to get involved in the engineers board. In fact, our next quarterly meeting with the city is being scheduled at such a time that the homeowners altogether can discuss possible changes to whatever the city is planning to write. Major progress.
Thank you. Thank you, Don. Anybody else for public comment on this item? Seeing none, this, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council for discussion, and I just want to make my compliments, compliments to Mr. Leveck and staff for bringing this forward to us and, and the progress that we've made. Matt, Christine, any comments?
Uh, no, no, but I appreciate Don coming in and speaking on behalf of the homeowners.
Yep, thank you. John, Noah?
Appreciate the rapid follow-up by Mr. Leveck for, um, that last, uh, comment that was made. Appreciate, uh, you moving quickly. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I just want to comment on, uh, just how much this, this whole hearing has changed over the time since I've been on the council, going from, uh, one that's been very frustrating, I think, on, on all sides, to working together, and that's very refreshing, and, uh, not only has our staff stepped up to help make that happen, the residents have been accessible and started to communicate their issues clearly, and I think we're getting on the same page. And I also think, uh, it's worthy of recognizing Mayor Irons and Council Member Johnson for really getting involved and, and mostly, I think, observing and being attentive at the meetings, the neighborhood meetings that have been so effective, and I think you guys have been helpful in that, so thanks for doing that.
Yeah, thanks, Noah. Yeah. All right, good. I, I'll take a motion to approve item B1 as recommended.
So moved?
We have a motion by John, a second by Noah. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, motion carries. Item B2, Mr. Leveck.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, before we go on to B2, I just want to point out that, um, the citizens meeting, we're using doodle pole to schedule that, and it's looking like it's, uh, gelling around towards, uh, next Wednesday. I think I have the most responses for, uh, four to six, so we still have to determine a location for that, but I'll see if I get any more responses after tonight's meeting. And I also have to say that I was not personally responsible for getting the work done out the Cloisters Assessment District. That's because of our responsive maintenance crews, and I have to give the kudos to the guys that actually did the work on the ground.
Good job, Rob.
I didn't do it.
I take my comment back.
Item B2, uh, similarly, we have a, another assessment district, uh, a little bit north of Cloisters, the North Point Assessment District, um, and we also have a similar revision to that resolution that talks about, um, the sub, at the time of subdivision, and how constructive notice was made. Um, this, um, assessment district is for the maintenance of the North Point Natural Area, and, uh, um, uh, it's a much smaller assessment district, and with that, that really concludes my staff report, um, and staff requests approval of resolution 15 dash 15 that orders the, um, preparation of the engineers report in accordance with the Landscape Lighting Act of 1972, which is found in the California Streets and Highways Code. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leveck. Any questions from council? Am I right? John, Noah, anybody else? Uh, public comment is open for this item, for those who'd like to speak to this. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back for discussion. If there's no further discussion from council, I take a motion to approve item B2.
So moved.
So moved. So we have a, a motion to approve item B2 as recommended.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Heading. Um, any, um, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries. That concludes our public hearings. And before we move on to item D1, let's just take a, uh, five-minute recess, and then I got to Okay. Here we go. Welcome back, everybody. Looking for, there we go, okay. Looking at the monitor, AGP, thank you. We're back from our recess, and now we'll continue on with our meeting. We're on to new business items, and this is item D1. The subject matter is council consideration of a citizen request for a 45-day building moratorium, and council consideration of other actions related to neighborhood compatibility. Um, this is a mayor's report, and I'll explain a little bit about that. Recommendation is to deny the request for a building moratorium and adopt resolution number 1815, committing to completing the general plan and the local coastal plan update in three years. Alternatives would be to direct staff to start the process to enact a 45-day building moratorium. Um, I have a slide presentation. I'm, Scott's helping me out with the clicker since I don't have all that, but, uh, I was contacted, as well as others, uh, on council, as far as, um, considering this item as an urgency agenda item. Um, a couple of weeks ago, um, at that time, I was, I was reluctant and didn't feel though, as though this was necessarily at the level of urgency to, to agendize this, but urged the folks to, uh, come out to the city council and, and make their, um, you know, speak to their concerns over the building moratorium that we'll be discussing. And, uh, through some other work and diligence, as far as just trying to get, uh, more information on this, I thought there was enough information to, uh, put a staff report together, and so this staff report was written by me. Um, typically during, if this was an agenda item, um, it would, you know, council would have that discussion, it would direct staff, and the, the staff report would come, uh, from our staff, and it would come with their direction. So this report may seem a little bit one-dimensional, but it's here for everybody to discuss, so, um, if you'll bear with me. So the, the subject matter, as stated on the slide, um, AGP, I, I think we've got a slideshow up here. Thank you. So the subject matter for today's discussion is a council consideration of a citizen request for a 45-day building moratorium. Next slide, please. And the recommendation, of cour, uh, as stated earlier, was to deny the request for a building moratorium and adopt a resolution number 1815, committing to completing the general plan and local coastal plan update in three years. Next slide. And this is the background. So this, uh, this is the flyer from Neighborhood Compatibility Coalition. Uh, it states on there, Wednesday, March 25th, and, uh, these were flyers that were handed out. Some people in the neighborhoods may have received them. I know I did. Uh, council members, I think, were also received invitations via email, um, and that was the, the premise behind this, and, and, uh, so that was some of the urging of, uh, outcome of this meeting. Next slide. Uh, let me go back to my notes. So just one quick note. The, the meeting itself was organized by NECO, or Neighborhood Compatibility Coalition. Um, it wasn't a city sanctioned, um, meeting. I think that's, uh, important to state. Uh, council members were in attendance. It wasn't a city sanctioned meeting. There was no, it was, wasn't noticed, not, you know, per the Brown Act or anything like that. There was no participation from council members during the discussion, so I wanted to clarify that. At the conclusion of the meeting, um, there was a question, um, whether or not, uh, there should be, uh, a building moratorium, um, presented or asked from, uh, council, and that led to the, the email and the request from the citizens group to agendize an urgency building moratorium. And as I said earlier, initially, upon receipt of the request to agendize the matter, um, you know, I suggested that, uh, the Neighborhood Compatibility Coalition could speak at public comment, and council as a whole could discuss whether or not we wanted to do that. Um, in preparation, it led to the staff report, and now we're moving on to the process to enact a 45-day urgency ordinance, and as it's, um, laid out up there, it, the city council may, in order to protect public safety, health, and welfare, adopt an interim ordinance prohibiting any uses that may be in conflict with a contemplated general plan, specific plan, or zoning ordinance that the legislative body, planning commission, or planning department is considering or studying, or intends to study with a reasonable amount of time. There's a couple of bullet items below this. During discussion, um, I'm sure our city attorney or community development director could elaborate a little bit more on the, the process of a 45-day urgency ordinance. Uh, legislative findings are required to be made. A four-fifth vote is also required by, uh, council, and the findings that are necessary in, in support of a moratorium must relate to a specific, um, adverse impact to health and safety and in the absence of a feasible alternative. Next slide, please. So I laid out, as, as I was going through this, um, I, I wanted to understand a little bit about the, the history of neighborhood compatibility and the planning document. As I attended the meeting, uh, there was a lot of comment from the community, and I felt this would be both helpful for the people who were in attendance to the Neighborhood Compatibility Coalition meeting and for the viewers here tonight. So, um, I'll just read through these items briefly. The staff report that's available online probably outlines a little bit in more detail, um, as, these, these, these thoughts. Um, the city has three development documents. We have a general plan that was certified in 1988. It's 27 years old. A local coastal plan, which is our LCP, certified in 1982, it, that's 33 years old, and the zoning ordinance. That is our implementing document for those two, um, uh, guidelines. Below that, there's a, a bullet statement that, uh, identifies that our general plan and LCP underwent an update from 1997 through 2004. This up, update failed to get certified by the Coastal Commission. Next slide, please. Boy, I should have made this. I, I didn't bring my print in front of me, so I'm, I'm going by this. I, I forgot to bring my own, um, copy. Sorry about that. So neighborhood compatibility, language in our, uh, general plan and LCP, both of them are identical, and so, um, we have a, the Coastal Act of 1976, because we're a coastal community, we're required to have a, an LCP. If we didn't have a local coastal plan, that means that every coastal permit, and correct me, Scott, would have to be approved at the Coastal Commission level. So the local coastal pro, um, uh, plan basically allows the, the local jurisdiction to, um, act on behalf of the Local Coastal Act or the, the California Coastal Act. So one of the priorities of the, the Coastal Act is the protection of the character of community and its neighborhoods. Morbay recognizes the need to preserve the unique character of its varied neighborhoods and to create higher-quality visual environment within, among some of the issues that predicate the establishment of policy and preserve neighborhood character are the following. So this is exact language which, which is in our general plan and local coastal, um, documents. It talks about new residences and how they could be out of scale and character. It talks about allowable height, bulk, um, and scale for residential development, standards of guidelines that are needed to create buffers between conflicting land uses, and there's a need for balancing formula governing the allowable height and bulk of residential and commercial buildings. Those, those, that's the guiding language within our general plan and local coastal plan. Next slide, please. So this is the zoning ordinance. So the zoning ordinance is, is the enforcement tool. Those are the tools by which we will implement the language from our general plan. So I'll read, uh, a section from, uh, our zoning ordinance, and, and, uh, this is right out of our general provisions. The purpose of this title is to implement the general plan and the local coastal plan and to promote the growth of the city in an orderly manner and to promote the public health, safety, peace, comfort, and general welfare of the city by establishing regulations pertaining to uses of land, uses, location, height, bulk, size, and types of buildings, and open space around buildings in certain districts, providing for administration and enforcement of such regulations and prescribing penalties for violations thereof. That's the purpose of our zoning ordinance. This particular zoning ordinance, which is, uh, chapter 17.48, um, identifies the specific guidelines, um, for neighborhood compatibility. And, um, I can't read all that, but I'll go through, I'll go through a little bit about that. Um, the, this, this particular item, protection of visual resources and compatibility design, so new development shall project and where feasible, enhance the visual quality of its surrounding area. New development may be permitted only in the siting and design, and design meet following standards. So pardon me, I can't read all that, and I didn't bring my stuff with me. So there are some, um, aid, there are some items below that. Next slide, please. And this is the, um, uh, item for protection of visual resources and compatible design. So this revolves around character. Um, character, the proposed, um, development shall be subordinate to the character of its surroundings. Um, we have height and bulk. Um, we have parks, open space, view corridors, landscaping, and preservation. So that's the, the language within our zoning code that, um, implements those planning documents. Next slide, please. So this is, uh, a list of council actions. So what's happened in the last year, or year and a half. Last year, the city council upheld an appeal, um, over neighborhood compatibility on 1,000 Ridgeway. We denied the project. Um, upholding that appeal denied the project. As a result of that, council directed staff to develop design guidelines to address neighborhood compatibility. I think this was important. We had a lot of people come out, including, you know, the applicant who had to undergo that, um, and had his project denied. Um, I think the, uh, council acted appropriately by, um, directing staff to come back with, uh, interim design guidelines to, um, provide the right tools for both the applicant, um, our planning commission, and our community to understand what neighborhood, neighborhood compatibility issues are. Uh, the housing element and our, is also part of our general plan. This is another component that came up last year. We, the, um, last year's council, uh, adopted our housing element. There's also neighborhood compatibility language in that document, um, and part of that, we, uh, strengthened that language. You know, there's languages, well, should we, may we, shall we? We, we strengthened that, that language, and in addition, we added, um, neighborhood compatibility as our city goals that we adopted. And that's the next line. Goals adopted for, for this year include updating our general plan and the local coastal plan in three years and adopting, um, neighborhood compatibility standards. And the last item, uh, as I squint to look because I didn't have it, um, we've also developed an action plan on how we will update our general plan and local coastal plan that also includes neighborhood compatibility as a priority. In reviewing the staff report and the minutes and the joint meeting that took place between planning commission and the council, city council, we took on, um, an effort to review all our planning documents and say, okay, how are we going to get through, um, uh, an update of these documents? So we went through the process with a, uh, we went out to a consultant that reviewed them, guided both, uh, the council, and we had a public workshop for that on what's the best way to get through all these doc, these documents. So we had, we formed a, a, a project plan, a program to which will allow us the most efficiently work through these documents to update them. And keep in mind, um, neighborhood compatibility was one of the input, that was one of the, the, uh, the input on what was important through that process. So that's, that plan is out there and how we're going to step through that. Next slide. So focus and commitment. So in, in the, the report that I wrote, uh, there's a list of attachments, and if you're so inclined to look through there, um, it, there's a timeline that lists the 1997 to 2004 investment that we made in updating our general plan. So 18 years ago, the city, um, started to update our general plan and local coastal- So 18 years ago, the city started to update our general plan and local coastal plan. Seven years ago, Management Partners, which is a consulting firm, did a city assessment, and they made a recommendation to make the effort to certify the city's general plan with the Coastal Commission. So in 2004, we updated our general plan and local coastal plan. City council adopted it, sent it to the Coastal Commission to get certified. It's a process to get through the certification process. It languished there for years. This Management Partners report said, number one goal, update the general, get that general plan certified. So here we are in 2015. Just last month, Management Partners presented a 10-year budget forecast and made another profound statement that relates to the future of the city's fiscal health. And I have it written there, pointed out for you. "Long-term forecasts contrast the perils of short-term focus." And to me, what I wrote in this report for us to discuss, both with our community and our council, was that the long-term forecast is the updated general plan. It's the long-term vision. The perils of the short-term focus is allowing the long-term vision to fail. We went through that. We went through, 18 years ago, we went to update our general plan. That's why I'd like to share this story and make sure that we understand some of the actions that council has taken and where we're going. So Resolution 1815 commits the city to updating the city's general plan in three years. That's the long-term vision. Staying the course with the interim design guidelines addresses the short-term focus. Next slide, please. So for the conclusion of my report, my recommendation is deny the request for a 45-day building moratorium and instead stay the course on development of interim design guidelines and updating and certifying the city's general plan and LCP. Adopt Resolution Number 1815, committing and to complete the general plan and local coastal plan update in three years. While the lack of clear neighborhood compatibility guidelines is a concern, council has recognized that with a request for interim design guidelines and setting a goal for neighborhood compatibility standards. In addition to adopting Resolution 1815, I recommend that council give direction to staff and the planning commission that we remain focused on completing the neighborhood compatibility design guidelines, that we do not layer this process with commercial design guidelines and view protection at this time. I do not believe that there's a level of urgency to warrant the building moratorium, and the city is currently on course to undertake the development of a new general plan, local coastal plan, and design controls that address neighborhood compatibility. That concludes my report, and we'll go through the normal process of questions, and then we'll open it up for public comment. So if there are any questions from council, I'll look to my right. Noah, if you want to start us off.
Yeah, I wouldn't. Thanks for that report and all the work that went into it. Just a question for Mr. Graham regarding an update on when you would anticipate us actually coming back to council with some design guidelines that would be proposed for the interim.
Well, it's a good question. I owe them, I owe the completed document for the design guidelines. The planning commission has finished them, and I need to put them into a finalized, single document. They're right now in two separate staff reports at this point, and there's some changes that have to be made to them to implement what they directed. So the idea is to complete that by the end of this week, and then put it up on the website, provide it to the folks that are interested to it, and let them review that for a little while, and then schedule a meeting for us to go over what, you know, any changes that they may want and things they desire to see included in there and whatnot. And then my plan is to schedule it back before planning commission on May 5th to review the completed singular document that will be the design guidelines that they directed, and to also bring forward changes that others would like to see made, and then to have a discussion about that, and to see if there's interest in including those in the design guidelines that the planning commission has developed to this point. Depending on the number of changes that are made, if any, it may, they may take, they may move it forward to city council at that point, or they may have to have another meeting on it, which would be maybe a second meeting in May on the 19th, I think. And then I would envision taking back the finalized version for a recommendation to city council, and the city council would get it in either the first or second meeting in June.
It is on the June 9th council docket. Could be earlier, right? Could be. Depending on, but we don't want to short-circuit this process.
Yes.
I think it's an important point I'd like to throw in, is that this is a process. It's an ongoing process. It's been going on for seven or eight months. It's been before the planning commission four times already. It's going back at least once, perhaps two more times. There is a great opportunity to incorporate all of this important input, and the process will continue and should culminate June 9th at the latest with the council.
Thanks, Dave.
Just my last question would be, if someone's interested in, Mr. Graham, you mentioned some community outreach and opportunities. Planning commission's a great place to do that, but if, what would be the best course for someone to take if they'd like to provide their input, particularly once you've put those draft interim guidelines out for review?
Well, my contact information is on the website via email is probably the best. If they want to get it to me, they can certainly call me, contact me. We can meet if there's a group of folks that are interested in it. Again, we're probably going to have some other, probably going to have some other meeting on the topic to go over, you know, what changes are desired by the various groups that are out there before I bring back the finalized documents to the planning commission and then hopefully to the city council. So there'll be that opportunity. There'll be the planning commission meeting itself that we have, and maybe two. And again, they can always forward their information to me via email. Contact information is on the website and on just about every page of the community development portion of the webpage.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks. John?
Yes. Either a question for you, Mr. Mayor, or possibly for council. Could you define for me with regard to page two of the staff report, under process to enact a 45-day urgency ordinance, last sentence, "The findings that are necessary in support of a moratorium must relate to specific adverse impacts to health and safety and the absence of a feasible alternative." Could you define those impacts with regard to health and safety?
Can I, can I just say something? First of all, I failed to thank staff, Scott, and especially Dana. You know, I got to formalize a lot of this stuff, but, you know, the 45-day process, the language in which you're talking about, Scott, and thank you very much. Dana, thanks for putting it together. So I would think that's, that question would definitely go to Scott and/or our city attorney, John Fox. But that language was with their help. Thanks.
Great. Okay, so I redirect that to Councilor Fox and/or staff.
Well, I hadn't worked out what those findings would be at this point specifically, as it relates to the moratorium and the situation that we find ourselves in at this point.
Okay, let me maybe clarify the question.
Okay.
If the council acted to establish or support a moratorium, according to the document, it says, "The moratorium must relate to specific adverse impacts to health and safety and the absence of a feasible alternative." What does that mean? What is an adverse impact to health?
As it relates to the moratorium and the impact not adopting one?
Yeah. If we implemented a moratorium on building, it seems to me to say in this document that we must make that decision because it has a safety and/or health-related issue that is adverse. What might that be?
Council member, if I could maybe discuss it. As a council and as a city, you have your police power, and the authority of your police power is to regulate health, safety, and welfare. And so it's very broad as to what health, safety, and welfare is. And actually, one of the terms that wasn't used here is welfare, and that has been determined to include aesthetics. So in the context of viewshed and aesthetics, if there was an imminent risk to aesthetics, for instance, and we could make that finding with facts, that would be perhaps a finding that could support a moratorium. For instance, if someone wanted to build a 20-story building on the waterfront, and there was nothing in the zoning ordinance that would stop that from occurring, then you could state perhaps that constructing that building would have an imminent effect on aesthetics, and that you'd want to place a moratorium on the construction of such buildings. Health and safety, certainly that comes up often in commercial industrial settings. There's discussions about oil field regulations and fracking and those kind of things. Various jurisdictions are adopting moratoriums on hydraulic fracturing based upon the potential health and immediate health risks. So those are just some examples of the types of things that we would need to work on to come up with findings to support a moratorium.
Appreciate that, and apologize if I put you on the spot. Didn't mean to do that, but I was trying to understand myself exactly what the intent was. So, thank you. It's the only question I had.
Okay. Matt?
Sure. Scott, I have a question for you. It sounds to me, in terms of the various stopgaps, not necessarily stopgap, but the process that you are going through right now, setting up this paperwork, looking at, dealing with planning and bringing it back, as you're saying, to council in June, you're not in effect putting a moratorium into place, a moratorium stopping any sort of building, but you are, it sounds to me, attempting to do the things that a moratorium would ask you to do. Yes?
Well, actually, what we're working on is neighborhood compatibility policies, design guidelines, that address some of the issues that, you know, that really resulted out of that one, the previously mentioned 1,000 Ridgeway project. It was, you know, a size, scale, bulk issue primarily. It's a very large home in a neighborhood of much smaller homes. It was, I think, when it initially submitted, somewhere in the neighborhood of 6,000 square feet, when you had houses around it that were less than 2,000 square feet, many of them, and it was a bulk forward out on a corner, that type of thing. And we didn't really have anything. I mean, we denied, the city council denied it on the lack of neighborhood compatibility. But what we didn't have is a lot of specificity in our guiding documents, general plan, zoning code, to tell us exactly, like, what are the things that we want to see? How do we want the development to come forward? And so that's what we've been, I've been working on with the planning commission to this point, is developing those types of things, like having houses of similar sizes with similar setbacks, and not having those bulk-forward-type developments, and pulling back second stories, and in from the neighbors, and those types of things to reduce that scale and bulk. Those are, those are the things that, when we come forward with them, that you'll see in the guidelines. And we put a lot of pictures in it, so you could see what we thought were good examples of articulation and step back and things that we thought were maybe not-so-good examples of those types of things. So you have the wording of the policies, and then you have examples in there, and so we thought that was probably the best way to do it, to make it easily understood by the folks that are submitting development applications into the city. And that's kind of where we're going and what we're doing.
So in effect, if I can follow up on that, the guidelines that you want to establish and you're working on, and with pictorial evidence, making it evident what's going on, establishing those zones, you're doing that, understanding that there are these other appeals to various projects, not necessarily, well, it's fortuitous that it's all, it seems to be on Ridgeway right now. But in terms of this neighborhood compatibility, making it clear and evident that citizens are going to be able to come to planning and see this. But however, given that, Jamie, I think your point in terms of establishing the general plan, it's going to take one, three years, more or less, to create a strong general plan, even with the guidelines that you were trying to clarify right now on planning, doesn't this become problematic if these projects, if we end up, it's going to become problematic time-wise for each project that comes up, they're going to have to, instead of having one source of definitive information saying, no, in terms of neighborhood compatibility, it does not work, it will have to come piecemeal to you then. So that's going to be time-consuming, no?
No, that's what the, that's what the design guidelines are meant to do. They're going to be a singular document. They're going to be interim design guidelines. We're going to, the idea is to adopt them for a period of one year to see how they're working. They can be changed on the fly if we find things that are lacking in them, or things that we want to change, or things that are not specific enough. And I fully envision, you know, the separate path that we're going down with the general plan update, there's going to probably be some sort of design element in there that's going to direct us to create design guidelines, potentially by neighborhood, because we have distinct neighborhoods throughout town. And I would see some of the, some of the policies that we have in our interim design guidelines getting pushed down into what is the implementing ordinance and the implementation plan for the LCP, which is our zoning code. So that'll be the last piece of the update, will be the zoning code that comes forward. And in fact, we're required to produce that document because we've accepted a grant from the Coastal Commission to update our LCP, which has two pieces. It's the local coastal program, implementation plan, which is a zoning code.
Because, John, you point out the good point in terms of public safety and welfare as defined. So if citizens are going to be, we have folks that are on different sides of this equation here, but going, moving forward, if there is no moratorium, citizens who are concerned on either side of the equation will be able to approach the guidelines that are being set forth, yes?
Correct. Yeah, we're going to have public hearings on it, at least two more, maybe three, and potentially more, depending on whether the council ends up adopting them when we come here with them. But yeah, certainly. You're going to have all of those opportunities to have input, as well as those leading up to it when I publish the draft guidelines and place them on the website. They'll be able to have input at that point as well, and we'll have input that may lead to changes in the documentation moving forward.
Okay. Just one, sorry to belabor this, one further question. In terms of a moratorium, would in effect seize any permitting processes or building processes starting up, in that time period that a moratorium, 45 days, what could you envision happening that you're not already doing right now?
Nothing. Would it be the same? Yes. It'd be exactly the same. I'd be doing exactly what I'm going to do right now. It doesn't change that at all. The timeline that I gave you wouldn't change either. It would be the same process, the same approximate timeframe. Yeah, there's not, there's not going to be, there wouldn't be any difference to it.
Okay. I'm sorry, if I could ask one more question? In terms of doing this, this process and establishing these guidelines, and knowing that the moratorium would stop that, how could a citizen find out, a resident find out what projects are in the hopper that would either evade this process or be involved in this process?
Well, if you're talking about if a moratorium were to be implemented, we would have to have a discussion with the council about what that means, because it can mean many different things. It could be a moratorium on all-new development, and you could say, you know, the moratorium, we're going to hold it for 45 days and potentially extend it until we have guidelines in place, and it's going to affect everything in the pipeline. And that would be building permits, things that have been approved through planning, everything. Or you could say, well, maybe we'll just apply it to all-new applications to planning. It would depend, and it would be entirely up to the council to decide what that limitation and what would be, what it would apply to, what the moratorium would apply to, and how you intended to move forward with it. I mean, it would be up to you.
And does the same apply for the process that you're envisioning right now, establishing these guidelines, those same projects in the hopper, be they start to finish or wherever we determine that, so a citizen could come back and say, this is almost that permitting, we have to go back through. How could, do you see ameliorating that?
The design guidelines would not be apply, would not be applicable with projects that are in process, and projects all the way back to projects that are deemed complete at the planning level.
So then, in case, if we do go that way, and if someone came back, or people groups would say, hey, what about this project? You might have to say, we're going to have to go to the appeal process through planning.
Well, if it was already approved and in building, then there is no appeal process. If it was approved and within the appeal period at the planning process, then they could appeal it like they always can, and bring it forward for those reasons. The planning commission, because they've worked on this before meetings, items that are going before them, either, you know, by their regular process or through appeal, the planning commission, you know, brings up the issue, you know, the ideas of the concepts that they've raised and developed in the draft guidelines, they're not ignoring the fact that they did all this work. They're like, this project complies with those things. They make comments to that on a regular basis. So they are looking at them in relation to the guidelines that they developed moving forward. So they're... that they developed moving forward. So, they're, they're looking with that mind's eye at the, at the projects that come before them, and seeing how they do comply with that. And even at the staff level, we've, before we even started this process, we, and we continue to do so, point out issues related to design for projects that we think, you know, would not be received well either by the Planning Commission or the public at large. Because a lot of times, there's not, the plans maybe we get are not super detailed, don't have color information, don't have material information, are vague, or something along those lines. And so, we try to get better specificity and better plans out of them, and to include those things, like articulation, not design square boxes, things like that.
Okay, thanks. I'm sorry to take so long.
No apologies. All the questions are the better.
Yeah, I had to scratch a couple off. Thanks a lot. Matt? No, it's good, it's good. Quickly, before I get into process, it's a process question. So, Scott, thank you for taking this project on. I think it was maybe your first meeting in Morro Bay that you had the 1,000 Ridgeway project. So, that was end of October or early November?
Yeah.
Right. And you're still here, so this is good. And then, I would just, before I ask the question, I just want to appreciate the time that went into this process since end of October, early November, being a new employee and getting up to speed in general, and then how you've been able to bring things forward to the Planning Commission for their input and for the public's input in that forum. I appreciate that. So, the question I have then is, you, you attended the meeting in March that NECO organized, so then, that was a meeting that, you know, was a grassroots effort. So, if you're going to then have a meeting, again, once you have the completed guidelines document on the website, how will we inform people about that meeting? It will be a public meeting, but it won't happen at the Planning Commission. Your idea is to sort of have it kind of in a forum that's public, but how will we kind of tell people?
Potentially like, I was thinking about like a workshop format, really. So, we could go over it and lay the policies out, and, you know, maybe I could put them up on the screen, and we could talk about it. Because, I mean, to vet them is important, I think, and there definitely could be some interesting things that come out of it, and things that are worthwhile. And so, it's, I think that kind of forum is more informative than just getting emails and a bunch of information that's just handed over. "We want this, we want this, this is what we like. Take a look at this." It'd be better to have the conversation, so it gives a context. I think that's actually really important. When I go back to the Planning Commission, I mean, all those same folks could come to the Planning Commission meeting too, but at least I would have a better idea, you know, again, contextually, about what they're looking for and where they're looking to go, so I can frame that discussion for the Planning Commission.
Okay, great. And then, that would be something we could send out on notify me. So, if people are already plugged in to notify me, that would go out on the planning information. Just, I'm trying to figure out how to get the word out.
I think that's, yeah, that's what I would be doing, yeah. And contacting various people, you know, that I've, that come in and do development regularly, including the, and the people that are interested, the NECO group and so forth.
Okay, great. All right. And then, I think what I, what I've been hearing through emails and then through, through listening at the NECO meeting in March, is there's a certain amount of fear, and I understand it, that unless we act on a moratorium, then people will rush to build projects, you know, as soon as you put the guidelines up, for example, the draft on the website, then there will be a rush to develop projects that are outside those guidelines. So, I was just wondering if you could just briefly take us through a process of, if I have a piece of property today, and I have a wild design that I've paid for a year ago, how, and I bring it to you tomorrow morning, then what happens?
Well, if there are things in there that we feel are problematic from a design standpoint, you know, scale, bulk, neighborhood compatibility, doesn't fit in, we would write that up and either meet with the applicant or provide direction in a written format. If they said, "Great, that's great that you want that, but we want to move forward with our project the way that it is," I have the discretion to take it to Planning Commission if I want. If it was a staff-level, you know, project that would be approved at the staff level instead of going, you know, discretionary action by the Planning Commission, but I have the ability to take it there. And I've actually done that a couple of times since I've been here with projects that have proven problematic.
And then, can you talk to me a little bit about if a project gets to a point, when does a project get noticed to the neighborhood? And what are the reasons a neighbor would get a postcard in the mail, or notification about a home that's going into their neighborhood? And what is the distance?
The, the project gets noticed when we've agendized it for Planning Commission review, and/or when we're ready to issue the permit administratively. We will send out the mailing notices to everyone within 300-foot, within a 300-foot radius of the project site. And we've actually increased the amount of noticing that we do to include both, for a 300-foot radius, both the property owners and occupants. When I got here, it was 300 foot for owners and 100 foot for occupants, but it seemed to make more sense to have it the same for both, because everybody has the same right to comment on projects. So, that's what we do.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then, Jamie, this question is to you, I suppose, and maybe to the other council members as well. So, when, when the proposal, I saw emails that were sent to all council members. I don't know if you then received individual emails, perhaps, that I didn't receive because of your role as the mayor and your ability to put an agenda, an item on the agenda that I, as this individual council member, don't have. I don't have, maybe you just want to clarify, because I think it's a little unclear still. I couldn't do, as a council member, could I do what you've done, or is it because of the nature of your role as a mayor that you're able to bring it forward? Or what if I had worked with you? I mean, I guess I just want to kind of clarify this process, because I think there's a little confusion about why I didn't do it, why didn't Matt do it, why did you do it, and why didn't the staff do it? Just a little more clarity on that.
Good question. And I, I think in the staff report, I did lay out one item on council policies and procedures. And so, for the, for the audience and those that are attending tonight, the question came to all of council. And I, I can't recall whether or not I got individual emails that didn't CC all of council, but several of the emails were, "Hey, there's an urgency, you know, would you agendize an urgency, or consider an urgency ordinance for building moratorium based on the input from the NECO meeting on Wednesday?" And so, as I, you know, when I first saw that, you know, looked through some, you know, some of our policies and procedures, but my, as I said in the staff report, my, my initial response was, you know, "There's another format for this." You know, I didn't really feel as though this was an urgency item to place on the agenda, but it didn't prohibit the, the organization to come to council and then request everybody to do that. And then, all of council would have the discussion, direct staff as I spoke to that. But in the policies and procedures, it does say, "Mayor is responsible for establishing the agenda and may place an item on the agenda without council support." So, but also in there, if, if I do that, I'm responsible for writing the report. I did, I looked up a little bit. Other cities, it's not that way. They can, he can just say, "Oh, I want to agendize this," and then ask the staff to do it. So, but anyway, so I was tasked with writing the report. But it goes on further, and it says, "In such situation, the mayor or council member," let's see, "In such situation, the mayor or council member who the mayor is accommodating shall be responsible for providing a mayor or council report." In other words, as you look down below, it says additionally, "An individual council member may place an urgency item on an agenda with a minimum of 72 hours' lethal notice and a memorandum from the council member to council and staff setting forth the substantive issues of the item. For the purpose of this paragraph, urgency shall arise in those limited situations where an item requires immediate action, and the need to take immediate action came to the attention of the council member subsequent to the distribution of the agenda." So, it sounds as though you could have agendized this. You would have sent out a memo to me. We would have then worked together, and then you would have written the report. But, you know, that's a process information for the community. Great question. One of the reasons I did want to clarify, but I think it's, that's why I also let in, this, this report, it's, it's one-dimensional. Because usually, we would all have discussion, we'd have public input, and staff would have all that input to come back with a staff report. So, you know, my staff report, I could have just said, "Hey, I'm agendizing this," and written one single paper and said, "Hey, let's just talk about it," without anything. But there is a lot of information to this. And I've been involved with a lot of this as well, and I think it's pertinent to, to look at seven years to update a general plan. And that's what we did. And then, it didn't get certified. And here we are embarking on that again. So, I just think it's, it's, it's good to, for everybody to know the efforts that we've gone through. And so, anyway, that's, thanks for the question.
Yeah, thanks. And that's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. With that, I will open it up for public comment. For those of you who'd like to speak to item D1, consideration of a citizen request for 45-day building moratorium, public comment is open. Please state your name. You have three minutes. Thank you, everyone, for coming. And I would like to thank, you know, just for raising this issue.
Good evening. My name is Kirk Nagerian, Morro Bay resident, and I'm involved in, I guess, every facet of real estate here in town, from buying, selling, building, owning, everything. So, I definitely support the denial of any moratorium here in town. I do agree that we need to make some changes to the general plan and policies. I also agree with the design guidelines. I think they're important. Also, neighborhood compatibility. I think through design guidelines, we're going to get more neighborhood compatibility. So, I think that would be the primary focus. I, I think a lot of us here tonight, we've been the guinea pigs through this process of neighborhood compatibility and design guidelines, especially design guidelines, and have been getting piecemealed this as it's been going on. So, once this is done, I think it's going to be fantastic, because we'll have one nice packet that'll be clear, concise, and give us something to work off of. So, everybody knows where you stand, right from the beginning. The main thing is to take into consideration that we do have the different areas and neighborhoods here in town and lot sizes, so each situation is unique. Private views, which seems to be the hot topic, they've always been, been a hot topic here in town, and have never been a protected right. Okay? Everyone knows that here in town. They're, they're not a, they're, they're just, they're not, they've never been protected. Anyone who's bought a lot or a house here in town should have done their due diligence, looked around, made sure that if a property next to them, whether it's a vacant lot or a home, whether it's two-story or a single-story, if that was going to be built out or developed or built on, what, how it was going to impact the subject property that they were buying. I mean, that's just what you do when you buy a piece of property. You know, I think trying to change the rules after the fact and trying to say we need to protect views now is, is something that can't be done. Morro Bay was never designed for view protection, and to try to implement something like that now is, is just going to be an impossible feat. The main thing about creating any type of viewshed policy at this point only takes away from property owners' rights, especially for the buyers that have the knowledge and foresight to purchase pieces of property with an unblockable view, which now may be limited on what they can construct on their property.
Kirk, I'm going to have to ask you to conclude. Thanks. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Barbara Dorr. I'm a resident of Morro Bay, own property since 1993. I'm in support of the moratorium. I think it's critical. I think this has gone on for decades. And if anything, the mayor's stat report to the council and public pointed out how there have been many failures in the past, and we haven't done what we should do. And past councils haven't done what they should do to protect this community and its character. This is a quote, "A growing concern in the community relates to the fear that the qualities that originally attracted people to Morro Bay will be lost if future development is not closely reviewed and regulated." That's from your own general plan. I think it's time with a new city council and mayor to do something. Adopt a moratorium, adopt the guidelines. Morro Bay escaped the rapid transformation into an urban complex. Instead, steps have been taken to preserve the natural environment, which could have easily been lost. As such, the city has attracted a population who have come, not because it is close to their work, but because of its qualities. Many of these qualities are environmental, but an equal amount have been created by such things as the atmosphere of the fishing port and its isolation from the faster paces of life. It is because the people of Morro Bay have more than a casual desire to live here, that the need to take every measure possible to maintain the sense of identity is accentuated. Many such measures will have to be in the area of conservation and the maintenance of the environment. It is also important to realize that as the residents of Morro Bay were attracted, so too will the future residents be attracted. Therefore, sound guardianship, that's your responsibility, of this unique and attractive community is necessary if the quality of life is to be maintained. That's your outdated general plan, folks. It's not so outdated. It's pretty wonderful, and it's a guiding light, as far as I'm concerned. And I hope you change your policies and procedures to allow any elected individual on the city council or its mayor of Morro Bay to put an item on the city council agenda. If they have to write it to save money, let them write it. But please change your policies and procedures. Why should a two-year-elected person have more powers than four-year-elected individuals? Thank you for your time, and thank you very much for putting this on the agenda. Good night.
Public comment is open?
Good evening, council. My name is Nancy Bast. I'm a Morro Bay resident. I know you are dealing with many other very pressing issues. But like water and sewer, neighborhood compatibility goes to the heart of our quality of life here. I would like to read something from an interim ordinance that was passed September 24, 2007. Whereas, the combined height and mass of these large, single-family dwellings can tower over and dwarf existing adjacent dwellings and can be wholly at odds with the existing scale and character of the neighborhood. And whereas, large, single-family dwellings could substantially reduce the overall amount of open space in the neighborhood and have a significant detrimental impact on adjacent neighbors' access to light, air, and privacy. And whereas, the proliferation of such large, single-family dwellings continues to raise concerns in the community regarding undesirable aesthetic impacts and has contributed to the erosion of the small-town character of Morro Bay. And whereas, in an effort to develop comprehensive, consistent, and appropriate revisions of the city's zoning ordinance relating to single-family dwellings, the city council has already directed staff to proceed with a comprehensive study of the city's current zoning ordinance, and as necessary, to prepare new standards and review process for single-family dwellings. That was seven years ago. We have been waiting those seven years. Three more years seems to me like a pie in the sky. And it is likely this council will not be the one seated in three years. You have many tools to do this right now. There are examples of other cities that have ordinances that would satisfy this community's need for compatibility. In 2007, there were all kinds of guidelines. This, this interim ordinance was passed for 45 days, and it was extended. And then, it just died because we had people in power that didn't care about the residents' opinions. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lori Stamper, and I've lived in the area for 15 years. I didn't bring any notes. I I appreciate the comments made by all of the people of Morro Bay. And I would just like to say that I respectfully oppose the mayor's request to deny the moratorium. I could not have said better myself what the city said seven years ago. I think that planning has languished. I think the time is now to protect the privacy, the airflow, and the sunlight of all residents, and all residents do count that the property rights of one should not supersede those of another, that aesthetics and neighborhood compatibility is essential. I have developed homes under those guidelines within the Coastal Commission, and I've worked in order to maintain the integrity and aesthetics of my neighborhoods I've lived in in the past. I moved to Morro Bay and purchased my single-family home in the Morro Heights neighborhood due to the quaintness and character and the beauty of the surroundings. That cannot be replaced. If you do not act now, you are changing the landscape forever. You do not feel that there is urgency. However, every overscale development that does take place in this interim period is another blot on the landscape that is permanent. I think that Morro Bay is a wonderful town, one of the last quaint and funky beach towns in California, much less the central coast. I've lived in Pismo Beach, Shell Beach, and Cayucas. I've seen some of their positives and some of their major failings in the same area. So I think Morro Bay should step up and pass the moratorium and make the neighborhood compatibility a primary concern. Thank you.
Excuse me, there's the mic. Public comment is still open. Please come forward to those who'd like to speak to it.
My name is Ted Demont, resident of Morro Bay. First of all, how many are here to have a moratorium? Could you please stand up? Please stand up. Thank you. For a moratorium, thank you. What I've just given you is a document that was just passed a few months ago from the city of Monrovia, dealing with the exact same problem we have here in Morro Bay. They recognized the need for a moratorium and found a way to do it. We can too. You now have the template. There it is, right before you. That's how to do it. Right now, there is an imminent threat to aesthetics, as our council had suggested. It is at 845 Ridgeway. There's a permit that has been applied for, and there's an appeal in process in front of the Planning Commission. There it is, right there. There's the tool. There's the reason. Let's find a way to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
My name is Joe Anderton. I moved here in Morro Bay in 1983. I've been here for 33 years. 20 years ago, I was able to buy a small house in North Morro Bay, an old beach cabin without a foundation that doesn't abide by codes, and I'm still living there. I would like to someday build that. I would like not to have somebody tell me that I can't do a two-story, that I've not been able to forge yet, but I will be able to. 33 years, I've worked three decades with other contractors who are now passed and gone, who've had lawsuits filed against them by people that are behind us. And the general plan and the general rules of the plan, we have building setbacks, we have building height limitations. We have to have certified heights before we can build foundations, roofs, heights. A general plan to work for everybody in each neighborhood, which is an awesome idea, but to allow people, a few people, to affect, myself, I'm a general contractor. I just finished a house in North Morro Bay. I have 22 subcontractors. There's 10 people who work for each one of those people, each one of those contractors. There's over 200 people who are financially going to be affected by a building moratorium. There's a handful of people here who already have their houses, who have already, I've built for other contractors in this town, to the maximum square footage allowable, to the maximum height allowable. These people live in those houses. They have them. Now they're trying to let us not have them. I deserve to be able to have what they have. I deserve to be able to have a 1,500-square-foot house on a 2,400-square-foot lot, three bedrooms, two-and-a-half bathrooms, a modest home with a good design. And allow people to sit here and see this and listen to this. I went to the NECA meeting. They misguided people. They're like a quarter. They showed one side of the coin, not both sides of the coin. They showed houses going, we want compatibility with this roofline being like this on a downhill lot. Well, they showed the front of it, but they didn't go show what the person below them was looking at, which is 25 or 30 feet. So it was a one-sided coin. And the definition of the house on Olive Street in Piney, that house was built, when you look at the front of it, it's beautiful. It was built over 20 years ago. It was three lots that were combined. They didn't show the front of the house. They showed the big, tall, towering pillars on the house. The information that's being provided, some of the information on that pamphlet is not even true. It's not applicable anymore. I ask you to take into consideration, I don't want the financial impact on the people. Could you stand up? Everybody who makes money in construction here, who has employees, who's for, not for having a building moratorium? These people, their kids are here with them. Between us, there's 300 people who we employ. They bring money to this town. They bring revenue to this town. They bring revenue to the building department. $50,000.
I'm going to have to ask you to conclude, Joe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Norm Williams. I am a Morro Bay resident. And what we're talking about is not a building moratorium. We're talking about a permit moratorium. We want to delay the issuing of any new permits during this interim period. What we're concerned about is the appeals process, how costly it is to both sides of the issue. So if we have a moratorium in place, it will solve this problem. The fees that you have to pay for to file the appeal, those are costly. So we're going to have a situation while the council and the Planning Commission is deliberating, trying to come up with a solution that may or may not fit our needs or fit the community's needs. So what I'm asking is, the moratorium will solve this problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Norm. Anybody else for public comment?
Unless I'm required to, I prefer not to give my name. I definitely support the denial of the moratorium. I think we all know how destructive moratoriums can be, especially if you once lived in Los Osos. And granted, a 45-day moratorium is not going to destroy people's lives like a 29-year moratorium does. But I'm a person who grew up in Fresno. I spent 34 years in Fresno. And when people work hard all their lives, and they eventually make more money, and they want to build a bigger, nicer house, in Fresno, they just move out to the country, to the outskirts of town. And Fresno is sprawled in every direction, northeast, south, and west, and they've eaten up all the orchards and vineyards, so there's nothing left anymore to feed us because they have no limit on urban sprawl. A place like the coast, people do not like urban sprawl. They don't want to develop along the coastline and eat up all the open space. The alternative, when you want to, when you've worked hard all your life and you want to have a nicer house, is to buy a vacant lot in Morro Bay, or buy a tear-down, or buy a smaller house and add to it and put on a second story and make it nicer. And that's preferable to most people than eating up open space, is to do infill. Inevitably, people who want a nicer house are going to either put on a second story or buy a tear-down and replace it with a second story, with a two-story house. I built a house on a vacant lot that was full of weeds, and I built a two-story house to the maximum size because lots are small at the coast. I don't know who laid out the lots at the coast. Whoever did it 10s, 20s decades ago, they were idiots. They created 20-foot lots, 25-foot lots, 30-foot lots. And when you have a lot that's small, if you want a house of any practicality and want it to be aesthetically attractive, you have to build a two-story house. It's going to block somebody's view, probably, but you're not guaranteed a view. There's nowhere it says that you're entitled to a view. And yet, in Morro Bay, everybody has a view because all you have to do is drive down to the beach or the waterfront or the rock and enjoy the view. We're lucky enough to live at the coast where everyone has a view within five minutes. Doesn't mean you're guaranteed a view out of your corner window or your bedroom window. Somebody right now is building a house that's going to take away part of my view of the rock. I'm not trying to stop him. I welcomed him into the neighborhood. He's a nice guy. He has the right to build his house because he's building it within the parameters, as I did, within the setbacks, within the height restrictions. And it's going to be a great house, and it's going to upgrade the neighborhood because he's turning a vacant lot of weeds into a nice, beautiful house, as I did. And this moratorium is not about view as much as it is about taking away people's property rights, and that's a dangerous thing. And if they get away with doing it once with this house on Ridgeway, they will do it to every new person who tries to build a new house in Morro Bay. Mark my words. This is just the beginning. You don't want to give a mob the right to usurp the rules of private property owners or the government that's put in place to protect people's rights.
Thank you.
Marla Jo Burtan-Sedowski. And I'd like to take this opportunity to talk about the, what Mayor Irons brought up about the requirement for the conditions of ordering, putting in place a moratorium and the conditions of public health, welfare, and safety. And I would like to bring up the question of water, the availability of water to service our residents and our tourist industry, the people that come here. I'd like to take a serious, I'd like our whole community to take a serious conversation to our dinner tables and our work coolers and, you know, on the street corner, the bike path, wherever, and start really talking about our future in Morro Bay with our water. The best thing that we can do is get that WRF plant built and the recycled water coming back every day, all the water that goes into the toilets and the drains, having it recycled and coming back into our community. Whereas now, it goes out into the ocean, you know, and it's not even cleaned, really. I mean, you know, we'll get recycled Title 22 water back. So the soonest that we can do that, the better, you know? And the whole, the whole talk about building and not building. And I appreciate the gentleman, you know, their families, their work, and, you know, it's hard times. It's hard times in California. It's hard times in the nation with work. My husband's been out of work for about a decade. So I feel for these people. But we need to, just as a community, look at the overall. Where are we headed? And what's one of the main things that we need for public health and welfare and safety? It's good, clean water supply. And how are we going to do that for us in a state that's looking at a drought? When this drought ends, there'll be another drought. We're looking at a Dust Bowl in California. It's not going to be pretty. And we have an opportunity to make ourselves sustainable.
Thank you, Marla.
I'm Kenny Blackwell, resident of Morro Bay. I am for the building permit moratorium. And I'll reiterate a couple of things that was just said. Without a reliable, safe water supply, I don't know how we can continue to build more and larger homes. That puts us further strain on our uncertain, finite resources. A lot of people don't seem to be taking this into account tonight. Governor Brown has already mandated a significant decrease in California water usage. We can't keep adding water users when we don't have enough for current residents. As you know, we can no longer rely on state water supply, can't depend on our own wells as they become cross-contaminated from leaking sewage. That was, that was according to a 2008 letter from CC staff to Morro Bay staff. Also, with the sewage leakage, capacity needs for the new water reclamation facility can't be really calculated accurately. A building moratorium is not without precedent. Drought and chronic water shortages prompted an indirect building moratorium in Morro Bay in the late '70s, early '80s. I'm not sure exactly the exact years, but it was in that, in that timeframe. This was mandated by the Coastal Commission, and it stated that we couldn't build until we had proof of a reliable water source. That's where we are. In the '90s, the city council signed up for state water, and as was stated earlier, that solution is no longer really viable. So now we're kind of back to where we started. We have worse drought conditions now. The well water is questionable, potentially no state water. I don't think we really know what's going on in the state water issue. There's not enough water now for the people we already have. In regard to neighborhood compatibility guidelines, which have been discussed, and they're currently being updated with the hard work of Scott Graham and others, to me, it makes no sense to continue to allow building under the old guidelines that everyone here seems to acknowledge as inadequate. So now's a perfect time to just sort of stop, take a little breath, work together. That's what we're all about. It's what NECA is all about, working in conjunction with city and everyone in town. Temporary moratorium will allow us to complete the interim neighborhood compatibility guidelines before more permits are issued, and we believe this is an imminent threat on aesthetics. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
A G P, can we have overhead help here for the? We got some A G P coming. Thank you, guys.
And I really have to say this, but I think when a staff member or a mayor makes the staff report, they should basically recuse themselves. The health, safety with the admitted welfare of the city is a clear no vote. It's, so you guys will just vote no. The welfare was left out, which would have allowed you to vote yes for the moratorium. It just feels a little odd to me I had to say it. It will really cost you nothing to give the city a 45-day thing. It'll give everybody a chance to just take a breath. You want 12 good people to be on your advisory panel? Then you need to listen to what we have been saying since before 2007. We did a lot of work on that. And we had a staff, a council, that was against everything the citizens tried to do for this city. So if you want good people, you need to listen to the people who have been doing the work. And believe me, nobody's against builders building. Nobody's against anybody making a living. We just want it so that it's fair, as fair for everybody. You talk about property rights. Whose property rights are more important? They say, oh, somebody just bought a piece of property. That's their property rights. Well, is their property right more valuable than the person who's been living next door to the property for 30 years? How do you weigh that out? Whose property rights are more important? When people have complained about the little signs that people put out in the front yard when there's a project, I suggest there's a big sign, the size of a for-sale sign and those two little application forms. And on the for-sale sign, there's a post with a little handout. You can go and find out what the whole project is about. And it shouldn't be just for 10 days. It should be 45. It should be 60 days. It should, and then... It should -- and then, the applicant should have to send out 100 postcards, and they should have to handwrite them all out. Because if they have to write 100 postcards, they're going to notice that, wow, what I'm doing may really affect my neighbors. View shed, we're talking about view sharing, not view protecting totally, but view sharing. Neighborhood compatibility means good neighbors. When you let one neighbor totally take a view or destroy the neighborhood character, then you're taking -- you're creating an issue that becomes non-compatible and creates an unfortunate neighborhood situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Grant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Jason Riley. I am a resident and homeowner here in Morro Bay. This is my first city council meeting, so it's great to see the civic life of my chosen city at work. This issue is more divisive than I actually expected when I came down tonight, but since I first moved to Morro Bay in 2003, I've noticed a dramatic change in the character of my neighborhood in Morro Bay Heights, and felt compelled to come down and share that with you folks. I was heartened to hear about the process for the neighborhood compatibility guidelines. I think that's the right direction with getting input from all parties. The reason I wanted to speak in favor of the moratorium is that, from my perspective, a house built in an incompatible way is going to be affecting its neighbors for 50 years. And some of those projects could be permitted within the 45-day guideline. Mr. Graham shared that the staff does have some discretion to bring potential projects that violate future guidelines to the attention of the commission, but that's left to discretion and judgment about what those guidelines might ultimately say. And so, I would support that instead of relying on that discretion and estimation of what future guidelines might be, we come together as a city, we finalize neighborhood compatibility guidelines, and then move forward at that point. So I hope you'll support the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anybody else for public comment?
Bob Keller, Morro Bay. I support D1, staff recommendation to deny the moratorium. Instead of a moratorium, we should adopt the resolution that the plan that you guys were putting up for the local plan, the general plan, the local coastal plan, and then update that and work on that. Because that would be the way to move forward. Because right now, when people make applications, it has to go through the planning department, the planning commission, and also, if needed, has to go through the city council. And also, if you -- if they have problems, they can apply restrictions and ordinance and, you know, things that would work out for the -- make it compatible for Morro Bay citizens. This should be fair to all, to all applicants, because all applicants are reviewed, and if they're not in compliance, they could be revised. They go do by case by case with each applicant. Moratoriums should only be used as a last resort in emergencies, and I don't think we're there. Also, it puts a cloud on the city. Everybody looks at us and say, what's wrong with Morro Bay? And we become out there in the open for everybody to talk about. All because it also could affect our tourism, because they say, well, they've got a moratorium. I don't know if we want to go there and visit. And tourism is our biggest revenue. You have to think about that. Anyway, I want to close with, I'm in support of the compatibility for Morro Bay and also the privacy of citizens. But we should do it the right way and go through the local plan, the general plan, the local coastal plan. If we have to update it and revise it, we should do it, not at the expense of a moratorium. After all, we're all neighbors living in the most beautiful city in California. Let's make it fair for all citizens of Morro Bay. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else for public comment? Welcome, Paul.
Hi. My name is Paul Nagy, former Morro Bay Planning Commissioner, and I just wanted to talk to you a couple of comments about this item. First of all, I don't believe that any emergency exists, and there is no good reason for a moratorium. The existing general plan, our housing elements, zoning ordinances have been created from years of political give and take. Our existing requirements are very much like that of the county and all our neighboring cities. They've been used for many years. They're logical, rational, and tolerable. They're also equitable and fair, fair to the guy that built 15 years ago and fair to a guy that builds today. What would be unfair would be to impose new, more stringent requirements that others didn't have to abide by. The right to hold and use property is a crucial component of our freedom in America. As applicants come forward with projects, they should be assured of a fair, open, and unbiased process, not affected by special interests. The compatibility of our neighborhoods is not easily defined. Our neighborhoods are eclectic and diverse. Any kind of architectural style can be found on the same street. Morro Bay doesn't have an architectural review committee. And it's hard, who is to say what compares to what? You know, I might like this style of house. You might like that style of house. It's -- I don't think that this council should give in to self-appointed, in my opinion, narrow-minded dictators to tell you what we should do for our designs of our homes. Any changes that are made to our requirements and ordinances must be carefully deliberated over by all parties. They must be fair, so that every -- you know, we don't take away anybody's full use of their property. The issue of the neighborhood compatibility shouldn't be considered an emergency or require a building moratorium. No emergency exists. I've gathered some information from the city website and from a citidata.com site. And on from what this, with this, I've decided, what I've found out is that, on the average of the last 10 years, Morro Bay has added 15 housing units per year. This includes boom years and slow years. Well, Morro Bay has approximately 6,500 housing units. To add 18 homes or 15 homes a year to that 6,500 is adding 2/10 of 1% per year of our total housing. This is hardly an emergency and far from any rush of development. Placing a building moratorium into effect tonight would be totally unfair to applicants that already have projects in the pipeline now. Existing applicants have spent their time, money, efforts.
Paul, I'm going to have to ask you to conclude.
Am I speaking too slow?
Paul, we got your message. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
My name is Betty Winholz. I think Mr. Nagy was not around when we did some of our housing things earlier. I'm thinking primarily of 2007, and you may or may not have referred to that yet. I sent the council an email talking about when I was on the city council, and this issue came up eight years ago. And it was from a different group of people. And so, it's an issue that continues to come up because we have not addressed it sufficiently. And if we want to talk statistics, we can talk about the fact that over the last eight years, if we've put in an average of 15 homes per year, that's, what, 110, 115 homes that have affected that many different neighborhoods? And why people keep coming back and are screaming at the council to do the people's business. It's not a dictatorship. If the man was at the meeting the other night, he knows there were over 85 people there. It's unheard of to have that kind of people come out to a city meeting. So the council was present, and I think that you heard loud and clear the statements, the emotions, and the mental activity, the arguments that were fairly legitimate, and how that has impacted. And this is the people's business. You have been elected to do the people's business, and so to not address this in an effective manner is not doing your job. So I would encourage you to take seriously what the public is asking you to do. They asked eight years ago. It didn't get done. Now it's come back around again, and it's even louder than it was before. So I hope you take seriously the arguments that were laid out by the city attorney back in 2007 of why this is about the health and safety of our community and the welfare, health, safety, and welfare of the community. And that you articulate some of those discussions tonight, whether you do an emergency moratorium or just come back with some other kind of ordinance in a very short fashion. But in some way, you need to address our welfare and keep us from having neighborly fights with each other. And I don't mean neighborly fights, but fights within neighborhoods, between neighbors. You know, it's not going away. We've seen at least, what, two or three of those in the last six months or so, six or nine months. So to me, it's accelerating as things get -- as we try to define what's the general plan, what's the zoning, why isn't the zoning matching the general plan anymore? And that it's not something that can be put off for three years. We need that long-range plan of dealing with the general plan, but you've got to deal with the immediacy of our concerns right now and why we're not happy in our neighborhoods. And we don't want to have fights with our neighbors. And if you would give us some clean guidelines, so people know what to expect when they walk up to the counter, then there's no argument. This is what it is. You can meet that standard, and nobody's surprised, and everybody can be peaceful.
Thank you, Betty. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. Yes, a lot of input, a lot of emotion on that. As we go into discussion, if you don't mind, council, I'll lead off a little bit and cover a couple of comments.
Mayor, can I make one comment?
Pardon me?
Just based on the process so far, you haven't had a staff recommendation? If you'd like one, we're prepared to give one.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave. Appreciate that. Let me continue on with some of our discussions, and I'll back up. So I started off tonight covering how the report came about, and as, you know, it was asked to agendize it, and, you know, I said, hey, it's kind of a one-dimensional report. And now, it's up for the rest of council to proceed forward. And yes, could I have just said, hey, here's a white paper, discuss it, make a decision? Or could I have done what I did, and that's make a recommendation? You know, I consider, there's a lot of thought put into that, and there are a lot of comments out there, whether or not there is thoughtfulness going on, and whether or not we're acting in the best interest of the entire community. And, you know, the rest of council will speak to that. But my recommendation to not proceed with the moratorium, I think, was with the overall, what's best for the community. When I think about asking for a 45-day moratorium, there's staff time involved in that. We already talked about the amount of staff time it takes to get to June 9th for completed design guidelines. We enact a building moratorium, there's going to be staff time that's going to delay that. Those design guidelines aren't going to come any sooner. They're going to be delayed even more. So in light of that, I think that's one of the reasoning behind that. When I laid out some of the information on seven years of going through a general plan update, and, you know, this, the other ordinance, 533, that was sent, Betty, thank you very much, in 2007, there's a lot of things that we have done, but we've not completed. Three years, little disappointed. I don't think three years is pie in the sky to get our general plan and local coastal plan updated. I think it's a worthy goal, and I think that's part of it. You know, Scott, can you go back to the slides for a minute? And maybe AGP can take that one paper off? Thanks. Thank you. And go back one more, please. You know, it may not resonate for many, you know, as I was writing this, you know, there's a lot of things you have to think about, and you're trying to get it on paper. And so, in, as I look at that focus and commitment and all the items that we've done to get here, and updating the general plan is the huge component in doing that, I looked at the Management Partners' comment. It said, seven years ago up there, the Management Partners' report made a recommendation to get our general plan certified. And I'll read it, and it's in the staff report. It says, from Management Partners, it says, "Recommendation number one: Use this report to lobby the Coastal Commission for an expeditious approval of the city's general plan. The city must explain its grave financial position to the commission and the need for a certainty surrounding land use issues in order to attract investment to the community." Now, for some, you know, you might highlight the investment to the community. Those are their words, but there is a recommendation to approve, to get our general plan approved, and we failed to do that. The next recommendation they made just a month ago was, "Long-term forecasts contrast the perils of short-term focus." To define that as far as focusing on the general plan, that short-term focus, the need for that short-term urgency now to do a moratorium, I think we can do this in conjunction. If we do the short-term focus for a moratorium, then it goes back to my earlier comments about, we're spending staff time on this urgency ordinance, and we're not getting the design guidelines done. What's happened over the years through all this? Have we not stuck to our goals and stuck to these resolutions to complete them? Because Resolution 533 that was meant, sent to us, it didn't get complete. It fell off the radar screen. And I know there's many different reasoning for that. Part of my comments on that and focus and commitment is committing to getting that general plan done. And, you know, I feel for the benefit of the community, as in my recommendation, I don't feel that having a moratorium and a pause for 45 days is going to have that effect as far as getting our design guidelines done any quicker. It's going to take staff time to go ahead and move in that direction instead of completing the design guidelines that we have before us. You know, I'll pause there with my comments and maybe conclude. There's some other comments out there to respond to, but, you know, I do feel as though there was thought put into this. I mean, I came here for all the same reasons many other people. They like the quaint town. They like the eclectic, funky neighborhoods that we have. And those are things that we do, you know, cherish and want to preserve. And I think we're working through that systematically. And I think by going through a moratorium, I think it's not going to keep the process in which we're moving forward on moving. So with that, I'll just conclude my remarks. And look to my left, Christine, if you'd like to make your remarks.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. First of all, thanks, as always, to all of you who came out tonight and are sitting here now. Many of you going on your third hour, and you don't have a cushion like I do, so I appreciate you being here. And I would like to say, start out with something that I wrote thinking about tonight's meeting, and I'll read it to you. "As a council member, as your council member, I absolutely 100% am committed to the creation and approval of interim neighborhood compatibility guidelines/standards," was the word used in the staff report. I don't see the difference. If there is, please tell me. "I'm committed to those neighborhood compatibility guidelines with input from the public, the planning commission, our professional planning staff, and my colleagues on the council." I'm 100% committed to that. The reason I'm committed to that has to do with being in this room during the 1,000 Ridgway appeal. Many of you were in this room with me at the 1,000 Ridgway appeal. What happened there was, at the end of the appeal, which the council did uphold and deny the home that was 6,000 square feet, I heard both the appellant and the applicant say the same thing. And you heard it again tonight. Give us clean guidelines. Give us clean guidelines. That is what this council heard. We have two new members, however, I will tell you that, since the 1,000 Ridgway appeal. I don't know if you all realize, time marches on. So we are, again, another council, hearing the same thing within a matter of six months. Give us clean guidelines. At, in this room, after the 1,000 Ridgway appeal... At, in this room, after the 1,000 Ridgeway appeal denial, we turned to our brand-new community development manager and said, "Give us clean guidelines, please." And that process went into action nearly immediately. The way things go into process, of course, and you want it to be this way, is you want to be heard. And in this case, we were fortunate, as a council, we heard the same thing from both sides. It didn't end 100% happy for, obviously, the applicant, but we heard, we got the same message. City, you've got to help us out. So we know what to bring to you to build, and therefore, if it's something that we can find compromise on in terms of neighborhood guidelines, then there will be less appeals, less money spent on appeals, less time for all of us in the room appealing, and then more time for our staff to move forward with big projects like updating the general plan and local coastal plan. So here we are tonight, and my response is, we have heard you, and we are working as fast as we possibly can to get the guidelines. What that means is, immediately, those guidelines went to the planning commission. And we said, folks, when you're here after that Ridgway denial, we begged people to come out and stay connected to the process. And I'm so thankful that people have. Definitely, there's more momentum now, but certainly now, we've got some guidelines that are in draft form and that you can review. There's time as well to go to the planning commission and to comment again with them on the guidelines. You've heard Mr. Graham say he's going to have an additional meeting for general public input to walk through the draft guidelines. So I think we're hearing you in many ways, and I'm so glad that we're having this chance tonight to talk about it so that we can have a back-and-forth, that we, you've talked to us, we've heard you, we're trying as quickly as we can to do it. So then, logistically, I'm thinking about the moratorium. So knowing that since October, November, your city council has directed your city staff to work as quickly as possible on neighborhood compatibility guidelines, that here we are then considering a moratorium. So, logistically, I'm trying to figure out, well, if we say yes, let's go with a moratorium, then this staff, your staff, will have to go back and do legislative findings. At least, that's my understanding, that tonight, we don't start the clock ticking on 45 days. That will take two weeks, maybe, maybe more, to find legislative, I'm sorry, that's right, legislative findings to support the moratorium. So there, we lose time, which could be then, as the mayor kind of kicked off, put toward finalizing the guidelines. So that's where I stand at this point, is I want you to know that I've heard you, as your council member, as your representative, I've heard you. I think our staff are working as quickly as they can, considering the other important things that some folks of you, that certain people have pointed out, water, sewer, and neighborhood compatibility. All of those things, we're working quickly, as fast as we possibly can, within the government system, and within, and with respect to the public's input. So I feel tonight that I am, at this point, depending upon council discussion, I am supporting the mayor's direction, because I'd rather put that time toward getting you those guidelines and getting them back to the council as soon as we can, so we can then move them on, put them into place, and then people know what they can build, and people then have a better sense of, they won't be surprised by a project that doesn't fit into their neighborhood. So there's no way to entirely create standards that every single person in the town will agree on, but I think we have a step in the right direction. And I wanted to ask, Mr. Graham, have you, in your review in the city, since you've been here, have you reviewed the ordinance that we mentioned tonight from 2007, number 533?
The ordinance that required the houses that are over 2,500 square feet to go to the planning commission?
Correct.
Yeah, I've seen it.
That's been through your review?
I've looked at it.
Yeah, okay. So that's on your radar?
Of course it is.
Yeah, of course, right. So it's, but, so I'm saying that, so you, it was pointed out tonight that that was something that was missing the staff report, but it hasn't passed, it hasn't been passed you. So that's an important point to mention. And then, have you seen the Monrovia item that we were handed tonight by Mr. Dement? Just wondering if you had.
I haven't seen that, although the design guidelines that we're currently working on, I've used design guidelines for 12 different cities.
Right, exactly. Okay. So just to make sure that you've seen it, because it's a lot, some of the language sounds a lot like what we've been talking about since the 1,000 Ridgway denial and since 2007, with all the work that was done previously by the community and previously by the council, other councils. The last thing I would say to open it up for discussion is, I love the new posting process idea. I love a bigger sign, that people can see what's going on in their neighborhood. I mean, I think that's a great idea. So I don't know, you know, it just seems like making it a little bit bigger and coming up with a different way to display it. But I do think it is a little awkward, they are kind of small, and it's kind of hard to see. So that's a great option for us to consider. So I try to get a lot in, because I know it's a little bit late, and I know we've got a lot to get through, but, thanks.
Matt?
Sure. I really don't think that the various sides here are too far apart. Number one, property rights, they exist for everybody. But however, on either side, if we don't, I mean, moratorium, semantics aside, whether we call the slowdown, or if we call it a, let's get the rules in place, it benefits all, because then we have a laying, level playing field. Everybody knows where we're coming from, neighbors as well as builders. Because, I mean, we all, all sides take a part in this equation. So, because I don't think this, the moratorium or slowdown doesn't bode poorly on building. In fact, I really think that it's going to protect the jobs, because then, with that level playing field, everybody knows what they're going to build. Now, I really like your idea, Jamie, in terms of the general plan, in terms of long-term plans, short-term focus. I just think sometimes people can't see, they can only see the handwriting on the wall instead of the larger graffiti piece going on. And that if we build a lot of this smaller, and I don't want to call it neighborhood, well, I'm going to call it neighborhood incompatibility, in the long term, we're going to create a long-term vision of a city that we're not happy with generations down the line. And so, in terms of this neighborhood compatibility, it's incredibly important. And so, I will mix wording on it. I don't necessarily need to call it a moratorium, but I think that this slowdown, because as Scott's explaining the design issue or system that you're designing, it's exactly what people are calling for. So how we, how we could put that moratorium or slowdown and incorporate it within that process, because we have a lot of people on both sides of the equation here that have a vested interest, and monetary interests are not the sole motivators here. And so, with that in mind, I'm inclined, or no, I'm for a moratorium of sorts, or semantics aside, we call it a slowdown, or development of the, or a full development of the guidelines, where we have that, as Scott, you were saying, that we could exhibit it publicly, where people can see on all sides of the equation, either the process being built as it's being developed. Because I understand the general plan, as we do it, this is a huge stake in the city. And this is not just the last eight years, this is the last 30 years. The city without, with the vagaries of a general plan that's not clearly defined or is too vague, that can take too much suggestion on either side, that's debilitating to both sides. Because the building construction part of town, those vagaries cause problems, and then also from the neighborhood compatibility side. So what I'm thinking is, I would like to see either, and I'll go, again, I'll say it again, if we don't call it a moratorium, we call it something where we say, we have to put these design guidelines in place. As the existing projects are going through the permitting process, fine and great, but however, that's going to be doing due diligence, looking ahead at the next few years as the general plan is built. We can then say, yeah, perhaps we're putting the cart before the horse, but neighborhood compatibility and these guidelines are incredibly important, as we saw from, not just the folks here tonight, but the other night meeting we had, that was had. So this is incredibly important, and I'd like to see some sort of, if we don't call it a moratorium, that's fine, but some sort of slowdown. Thank you.
John?
I want to thank the Neco group. I highly believe that grassroots advocacy is one of the best ways to change things in a city besides your vote. And I appreciate the fact that there were a significant number of people that came together, found commonality, and through passion for a city that we all love, were bold enough to come forward and seek some fairness and a process that would move quickly to achieve a means that you desire. Now, I'm one that looks for common ground, and so I'm going to write, give you the five words I wrote down that I think exhibits the common ground that exists. One is frustration. I'm frustrated. I'm a newbie to this city. I haven't lived here for 40 years or 30 years, but I came here for a specific reason, because it isn't the Bay Area, it's not 100,000 people, and it is absolutely beautiful and quaint. And I brought my children and my grandchildren along with me so that they could grow up in this environment. I'm frustrated over the fact that, as I look back historically, that this argument's been going on, or this disagreement, or this discussion for over 20 years. As I read historically what's been happening with regard to the definition of neighborhood compatibility. I sat through the Ridgway issue prior to being elected. For almost a year, I attended every council meeting so that I could be up to speed, and was embarrassed for both the council and the individuals trying to build the home at various times because of this nebulous thing that we called neighborhood compatibility. It made absolutely no sense. If you look at the campaign literature for three people that ran, you'll see that the LCP general plan update is a priority issue for each of us. Hopefully, that's one of the reasons we got elected. So I'm frustrated, just like you are. Why didn't it happen over the last 20 years? Two, I'm fearful, and maybe you are too. You're fearful that things are going to happen out there that are going to destroy the view shed. And we could argue terms like health, welfare, and the true meaning of that. And I do believe that one's health can be affected by the loss of visual acuity to something that is pleasing to the eye, like Morro Bay Rock or the ocean. And that, in a long time, over a period of time, can affect one's health. So there is a significant connection there. I'm, I do believe that there's also alignment. We're aligned in the fact that we want something to happen now. I want something to happen now, or I want something to happen yesterday. And so I do believe that the other piece of common ground is alignment. And last is, I think there's an appreciation for both sides. I do believe you appreciate this group, whether right now you're looking at us, saying, I'm not sure I do or not. And we appreciate you, because this kind of input and daylighting information like this, and by the way, I just want to commend the mayor for writing a staff report, for daylighting this issue, bringing a significant history forward, and allowing us to deal with this head-on. And those commonalities, I think, bring us to a point where we can agree on this. There is a process in place that has happened because you have a group of people here, I believe, that is committed to seeing this happen very quickly, and that the definition of neighborhood compatibility be not nebulous, but well-defined, as well-defined as it possibly can be, in an expeditious matter. We made it a primary goal for the city. We made it a priority in terms of timeline, and you heard tonight the fact that it may well be before the council on 6/9. I wish that there were a group of people that have been watching over the past three weeks, the presentation made on our 10-year budget forecast. I wish 80 people would get together and look at what's going to happen to this city in 10 years if we don't do something radical to change the financial status of the community as a whole. And this issue contributes to that. We, as a community, because of our scale or size, are challenged financially. It's just, it's a fact of life. We don't have affordable housing, we have water issues, we have quality of life issues, we have neighborhood compatibility issues. And those will exist for a period of time. But I do want to say this. I do not support a moratorium. I don't believe that's the answer. I believe the answer is accountability for moving this council forward to what you heard tonight, to what we're committed to, and that is making this happen extremely quickly, and seeing those outcomes occur, and a comprehensive LCP GP developed over a three-year period of time, as promised to you by all of us here tonight. So I do not support the initiative. Thank you.
Noah?
I do support the initiative, sorry.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, thank you. And I agree with most of what you've all said. I think we've all heard over the course of, well, the last decade in some cases, but just at the Neco meeting, how much the agreement there is on getting the design guidelines in place. And thankfully, this council recognized that from the calls from the community, starting with the 1,000 Ridgway project. And we put that in play, and the planning commission's been working really hard on coming up with something that's going to, that's going to be effective. So there's still some work to be done, and the review of that outcome is going to be very important. I'm not sure there's going to be as much agreement from the different factions on the actual project, on the actual guidelines as they're drafted. I think there's going to be some layers of gray in there, but at the same time, we're getting much closer to something that's going to benefit all of us and start to remove these concerns finally from the community's work plate, which in 2007, I attended those workshops, and it was the same thing we're hearing here tonight. So I think we're on track to address those. Some of the things that I heard tonight that I know aren't comfortable for people that are dealing with issues, where homes have been built that they feel are out of scale with their neighborhood, that have blocked their solar access and shaded their second, or their lower floors, so now there's mold growing in the lower floor because there's no solar exposure and so forth. There is an appeals process in place, and any builder or homeowner that's trying to build will take note that, so far, this council, when things have come forward to us on appeal, have upheld those appeals based on, in part, the neighborhood compatibility issue. So I think, from the developer's side, they need to be doing their homework right now and realizing, at this point, if you think you're going to fast-track something through to avoid a moratorium, which likely isn't going to be happening, but to try to get to the point where you have something that you're sneaking by the process, that's not likely to take place. Now, there are some concerns about how the community, you know, is going to be aware of projects. And I think we have a decent notification process in place. Christine suggested, as one of the public members suggested, improving the signage to increase the notification. I think that's a good step, particularly in the short term. We could look at that as an interim step that then could be reviewed. That was also brought up at the meeting earlier in March. And so, to me, that's reasonable. It's something to help the community take a breath and realize, hey, if something comes along, I'm going to have a chance to at least initiate an appeal if necessary. From what I understand, an appeal that's actually filed, if that appeal's upheld, there's a refund to the people that do appeal?
That's correct, and I think the current fee's $257.
Exactly, okay. So that's still in place, so it is expensive, but there's something there. So if you do appeal, and it's upheld by the council ultimately, or the planning commission and not further to the council, you've got some relief there. The other thing that I think might be interesting to talk about, it'd be kind of, I'm curious to hear what staff would say about that, but currently, a 300-foot notification of mailing for noticing, we could expand that to 500 feet temporarily. And really, any builder that would be concerned about that should think to themselves, well, why am I concerned about that? Am I putting something to be proposed that's going to, should I reanalyze what I'm proposing to try to minimize the chance of having to go through this process? And I think that's, what we're trying to get to with the design guidelines in general, is try to create that clear path for either the builder, or for the neighborhood, or for our staff and the planning commission to wrestle with. So those were the two things that I thought could work, because I'm also not in support of a moratorium at this point. I think we need to stay focused and keep this ball rolling to complete the interim guidelines and so forth. I did have a little bit of curiosity about staff's recommendation that was mentioned earlier. I'm not sure if that's been changed at all by our discussion, but I've noticed staff's been coming up with some pretty creative solutions for us lately, so I think at some point, we should let them talk about that.
Sure, that'd be great. Just want to get the council enough time to give their discussion points. And, everybody done with their discussion points, then, as we say? Okay, great. One more, Christine?
I didn't address the resolution.
I didn't address the resolution. I neglected to address the resolution of getting the general plan done in three years.
Okay. Do you want to make comments to that?
Well, I would support that.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Dave, you had some recommendations?
Actually, I believe that all of the points that I would have made have been echoed from the dais. I'll just state that your staff recommends that there be no moratorium. There is a disciplined process in place. It was on February the 18th that this council gave us a goal or an objective for this year to develop and implement neighborhood design guidelines. That was February the 18th, and it will be complete by June the 9th. The process is ongoing. There has been public input to that process. As recently as this afternoon, Scott was meeting with various residents to work through issues related to this. And so Scott is very accessible. As you heard, the planning commission is really already leaning forward. They're already thinking about the proposed guidelines as they are considering current Somebody did make the point, and I think it's crucial to reiterate, that one of the important things for our city is to have a disciplined and a level playing field that everybody can count on. We want everybody to be able to know what the standard is and to be able to count on that standard. That protects everybody. It protects those who are already here, and it protects a developer who may have a project that will contribute to our fiscal sustainability in the future, who wants to invest in our city and wants to know what the requirement is, what the standards are, and to know that those aren't going to shift and change while he or she are in the middle of their project. I am quite concerned about our long-term financial stability. You all heard that two weeks ago with the 10-year budget forecast. And there were some good comments and concerns about water. This council, probably about five or six meetings ago, approved the water offsets for this year. There is a process in place for water offsets that balance new development. And there is adequate -- the staff and the appropriate commissions will not let any projects through that bust those water offset caps. And so I believe that the appropriate thing to do is to continue on the disciplined process that we are, and we're moving it very quickly. And we encourage lots of great public comments and ideas and input. I shouldn't say public comment, but public input to the process as we shore up the interim neighborhood design guidelines. And those guidelines will be considered, will really be in place going into the general plan update. So it is, in my mind, it's sort of a misnomer to say we're going to wait another three years. Actually, we're waiting about another, shoot, eight weeks. Yeah, eight weeks, four council meetings. And then those new guidelines are going to be in place, and we'll be on firm ground at that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckingham. You have some comments?
Just wanted to make sure that there would continue to be, and I did hear Scott say it, continued opportunity for public input to the remainder of the process as it goes.
Absolutely. I mean, through the, you know, the maybe neighborhood workshop that I have, including then moving on to noticing it for the public hearing that we'll have for planning commission and for future city council meeting.
Noah?
I do want to follow up too, because you did mention the water components of this and the concerns there. And thanks for mentioning the water equivalency unit offset that we have in place now, as well as the discussion that we put together regarding looking at solar exposure to help try to ensure that for either renewable energy generation, but also just for the solar benefits for homes and what that means. And then we also have something in place, working towards a dual-plumbing retrofit component that is going to take more time, but we've asked staff to begin that process and fit that in over the course of the next year. The other thing that I think is important to point out for water in relation to building, whether it's a remodel or new construction, is in almost every case with new requirements, it's going to be a more efficient water user anyway. Yes, it's going to be a larger house, very likely, but there's going to be much stronger stormwater management technique in place, as well as water use in the fixtures and so forth. So there's a balance there. I think at some point, if this drought continues, we will need to talk about a moratorium based on water alone. We're working really hard to avoid that situation, but it is a point that I think has much stronger argument for a moratorium than the neighborhood compatibility, because we have gone so far in addressing that, and we're about to complete that hopefully.
Okay. Yeah. This whole idea of moratorium on building is really connected very intricately to the general plan update. I mean, we've gone through the town -- the city's gone through such an up-and-down spiral, sometimes backward downward spiral, especially since 2007, that I understand what you're talking about, Scott and Dave, it's eight weeks, and we could possibly have these design guidelines in place. But however, you have to understand the caution that people are bringing to the table, talking about this and saying, "Look, we've been down this road before, and we don't want to do it again." So I am, however, totally in line with doing the general -- starting the general plan update. I don't want to say my support for the moratorium doesn't say I want to update the general plan. I mean, so, there you go.
I'd make a motion, then, that we deny the request to consider a 45-day building moratorium and adopt resolution number 1815, committee to completing the general plan and local coastal plan update in three years.
Second?
We have a motion and a...
Second.
Noah?
What discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, I'd like to follow up on the suggestion of increasing the signage, size of signage for projects for noticing.
Yeah, can we -- I think there's room for other discussion, other motions.
Okay.
And we can -- because I'm sorry, I probably should have clarified that, but just want to get through that, and then we can make some other motions on that. I think it'd be great.
That works for me.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
So you move the entire recommendation?
Entire recommendation.
Okay.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Oh, excuse me. We have a 4-1 dissenting. Matt, thank you, excuse me. 4-1, motion carries. Noah, you had some discussion. And then also on the table, just wanted to make sure for staff and for council, I also in the report made -- thank you all for coming tonight, made a recommendation that the council gives staff direction, the planning commission direction, we focus on completing the neighborhood guidelines specifically, and that we not layer the process with commercial guidelines or view protection at this time. Based on some of the comments from our last planning commission meeting and input there, there's questions whether or not we should go into commercial guidelines or anything else. And I think for the sake of getting this complete, I think it would help for this council to say, "Let's get our neighborhood, residential neighborhood design guidelines complete." And then if there's any other discussion later time, we can do that then. So I think it'd be important to have that discussion as well as the signage, so I just wanted to speak to that.
Okay. I'll move that council affirms the neighborhood compatibility interim guidelines as a priority project for the planning commission.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Noah, so a second by John. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Is that clear enough, Scott?
Crystal.
Okay, good. And then signage?
Yeah, I did want to give Mr. Graham a chance just to talk about what that would mean for not only the larger signage for noticing on projects, but then also expanding from 300 feet to 500 feet for noticing, postcard noticing and mailing.
It does increase the expense, obviously. The signage size that we use now is 11 by 17. It's actually pretty visible. But we could go to a larger sign that is more commensurate with the real estate size sign. I actually have standards for that. I've -- I developed them when I was in Pismo. We were going to go to them, and then at the last minute, it kind of got killed. But I have them, and they wouldn't go to waste. So that means I don't have to do a lot of work to make it happen. I'd probably look at changing how we do submittal requirements, because signs of that size aren't things that we can produce internally. They're going to have to be something that's produced externally from a sign company. And so would probably have to work out something where the applicants are providing that to the city, which is fine, because they should be bearing the cost of it, right? I mean, it's their application. And that was the direction that I went when I was going down this road when I was in Pismo, because again, we didn't have the ability to make a big sign in-house.
A big sign.
Yeah. So we would give the -- I mean, I have a standard that says what kind of post we want it mounted on, the type of material to be used, type and size, height of letters, font size, that type of thing. And then usually a requirement, like you'd have like a picture of what the project is on it. And so that was what I -- that's the one thing I have to change would be our submittal requirements to reflect what that is, probably attach a little one-page handout on the back to say what that is and that that has to come in. And that would be part of the regular review. So you submit your application. We review it to make sure your -- it meets setbacks and has all the numbers and sets of plans and the studies that you're supposed to have, and that you also have the notification sign that has to be posted on site. Does that sound like what you're looking for? Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's not that the sign itself isn't large, it's just that then the writing is really little on the 11 by 17. You know, it's just my experience and just me.
So Scott and I had to exchange some comments about this, and I would just ask us to ask the question, "What's the problem that we're trying to solve? Is there one?" So Scott's assessment is he might have received one complaint in the last nine months about the size of the sign. My long and vast experience in Morro Bay tells me that word travels very quickly in Morro Bay. So I just -- we can certainly look at this. Perhaps I would like us to bring it back to you in a fuller -- for a fuller discussion, but I'm not convinced that there is a problem in place. And before we also necessarily have handouts on the signs, there's other ways to work that. We could have a QR code reader on the sign that would link straight to pictures, handout the whole planning document, some of those things that would -- just so we have a process that is also acknowledges where we are technologically.
Well, I guess I just want to follow up then, because I think my -- the intent is to provide some short-term assurance that people will have the opportunity to know and be aware of proposals in the meantime, as we work to get these design guidelines in place. So whether we expand the mailing to a 500-foot radius or, you know, do something with a larger signage, I think what the interest is, is try to address that, to make sure that people will be aware of projects in the short term and be able to comment on them. I heard that at the NICO meeting. I've heard other comments, you know, as we've been discussing this over the years. I'm not necessarily in the mood to prescribe exactly what we need to do, but I think those two options could be fairly easy to implement, fairly inexpensive, and something that we could do in the very short term.
Can I make a suggestion on this? Why don't we include this discussion with our planning commission through these efforts of neighborhood design guidelines? Can they continue the effort, this discussion, and then kind of work out some of the details as well?
Yeah, I just think it's an advantage to the city to be proactive in letting people know what's happening in their neighborhood. It's an advantage to all of us. So I think, you know, we should absolutely consider it a short term and then moving forward. That's just my opinion on it. Living here and being busy every day and then catching something out of the corner of your eye, you're like, "Oh, jeez." That's sort of what we're looking for here. That's my opinion.
So what's the consensus, then? How are we going to go about this from this conversation? Planning commission? Is it okay?
That's fine with me, Damian.
Work out those details?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Cool. Thank you.
Before we close, though, I did have one item that, you know, in our discussion, I think that Councilmember Makowetki was in support of the general plan resolution. And because of the -- it was paired with the motion on -- and I don't know if we would -- I just wanted to bring it up before we moved on, that he was in support of that.
You know, that's a great point, and I think it's relevant. And I think procedurally, we could just go ahead and restate the motion. I'd look for our city attorney. He was in support of that, and I think it's, you know, I think it's valid to, if he wants to, you know, that support to be recognized. So basically, I stated a motion that carried two discussion points, the resolution and the denial. And so for Mr. Makowetki, it was a no. But he supports the resolution, so I would like to restate the motion to approve the resolution.
I think that would be, that'd be fine.
Okay.
For purposes of the record.
Okay. Thank you. And speaking to that, I'd make a motion that we approve and adopt resolution number 1815.
I'll second that.
And that's a second by Christine. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Thanks for that clarification. That's good to have. Thank you. Any other discussion on this? That would conclude item D1. Thank you, everyone, for coming out in the discussion on this and for everybody's input and support. Appreciate it. Moving on to item D2. Item D2 is discussion and direction of staff regarding fee subsidies and cost recovery. Mr. Buckingham?
Okay. So this is an item for a discussion and decision, or at least direction, decision in some areas and direction in others, on a potential fee subsidy issue or on the fee subsidy question. The purpose of the report is to provide context and then get your direction. Recommendations upfront, so you know where we're going. The staff recommends that the council direct a zero-subsidy, full-cost recovery model for most general services, community development, and public work services in the city, with a few exceptions noted. Staff also recommends the council ask the harbor advisory board to review and make recommendations on subsidy levels for harbor services in general, with a specific focus on subsidies for commercial fishing activities. So we'd like you to ask the harbor advisory board for them to take a deeper look at this before we go messing around with it. Similarly, ask the Recs and Parks Commission to review and make recommendations for subsidy levels for general or for recreation programs and facility rentals. And then finally, that you direct us to bring you a subsidy decision to the council by June the 9th, when you'll have the neighborhood compatibility guidelines also. This is the agenda. I've got a staff report, council questions, public comment, council discussion, and potential council action. Couple of background points. So the city has two basic sources of revenue, taxes and fees. The fees are charged for -- we all pretty much know what taxes are. The fees are charged for various city services, from reviewing planning permits to issuing building permits to renting a city facility to participation in a recreation program. By law, fees may not exceed the reasonable cost of providing that service in question. And fees should include not only the staff time required to perform the service, but also a reasonable calculation of all of the additional operations, maintenance, and capital replacement costs the city bears to provide the service. Couple of terms. Cost recovery is a term of art used to describe the establishment of fees to recover some or all of the costs for providing a service. Full-cost recovery means the user of a service is charged the full cost that the city bears for providing that service. A fee subsidy is a related term used to indicate what level the city may choose to subsidize some or all of the cost of a particular service. The city should be very deliberate in determining what services might be subsidized and to what extent. This is because the money used to subsidize any service comes from the city's This is because the money used to subsidize any service comes from the city's general revenues, the taxes paid by others who may, may not be directly benefiting from said service. It's a point that probably bears reiterating, and that is, for whatever services the city provides, if the cost of providing that service is not borne fully by whoever is participating in that service, for example, a recreation program, then the rest of the cost of providing that service is shared by all of the taxpayers in the community, and in fact, comes out of the taxes paid by the members, the residents of the, of the community, no other fees. So an example here, the development, design, and construction of a new home requires thousands of dollars in various city-based, or city, fee-based city services, such as a building permit. If the city does not require 100% of the cost of providing that building permit service to the home builder, then the amount not recovered must come from the city's general tax revenue. That means that part of the city's costs generated by one resident building a new home would be subsidized by the taxes of all the other city residents. In general, the cost of services that do not have a community-wide benefit, a benefit to every member or most members of the community, should be borne by the individual primarily benefiting from the service. So the police and the fire provide a general, community-wide benefit for everybody, and those are primarily tax-supported, whereas a building permit generally benefits only the person building that home, and thus fees are appropriate to, uh, for that activity. Little bit on actual cost and cost studies. So determining the actual cost of providing a service is very important. Um, in the past, the city has commissioned consultant services, for a price, of course, to help determine the cost of various services, from the planning department to the recreation department. Updating these cost studies in the future would be a wise investment. That is something that we should do. Currently, however, however, we believe we have a very good and a fair idea of what our costs are, from past consultant studies that we've conducted, from internal reassessments, and from comparison to other cities. So my point here is, we've got a pretty good idea, a pretty dead-on idea of what our costs are, although, uh, in a few areas, we do need to do some more research, especially harbor and recreation, thus why I'd like you to ask those, uh, those boards to take a closer look. Okay, so how do we then go about setting fees? Once the actual cost is determined, then we can factor in whatever subsidy level the city has by policy adopted for each type of service, and then the fee for the service can be advertised and assessed. For example, if the city determines that the actual cost of an appeal of a decision on a planning permit is $3,000, and the council has adopted a policy that says, uh, there will be a 75% subsidy for appeals to the planning commission, or of a, of a planning decision, then the, then the fee for the planning permit appeal would be set at $3,000 times 25%, or $750. In other words, the council by policy would be choosing to subsidize 75% of the actual cost of providing that service. The city publishes the cost of services annually in July, following council approval of the master fee schedule. So a quick process summary, the council sets a policy for what items should receive a subsidy, and what level of the subsidy, what level the subsidy will be in percentage terms. This policy, in resolution form, remains in effect for the long term and does not need to be updated annually. And, and I'll note that the city of Morro Bay has not regularly done this before. Most other cities have a fee subsidy policy in place and, uh, and use this process, and uh, this will actually likely be a management partner's recommendation this year, so we're, we're getting ahead of them a little bit. But, so what, this is a sort of a first for, for Morro Bay, is for the council to establish by policy what the subsidy level should be, um, and then, uh, and then the staff, as we go on, will help calculate the fee. So after the policy is set, the subsidy policy, the staff annually calculates the cost of providing each specific service. Costs vary. Let's say electricity goes way up or way down, or some other, uh, some, or the cost of outsourcing a, uh, the review of a specific engineering plan goes up or goes down, those costs can vary. The fee published in the master fee schedule then equals the actual cost of providing the service, minus the percent subsidy that the council has approved. And then the master fee schedule, which incorporates the cost and the study, is approved annually by the council. So we'd still bring the master fee schedule to you. What's really happening now is, sort of whatever subsidy amount you want to sort of put into the fee is addressed while you're looking at the master fee schedule, instead of a more disciplined approach that says, we'll have no subsidy for, um, for planning actions, a certain level of subsidy for senior programs, a different level of subsidy for youth programs, um, a different level of subsidy for appeals, for example. Okay, so a, a little bit of discussion, that's the background, um, in a few areas. These are the areas that I intend to, to provide some discussion on, general services on down to accessibility. So in, uh, general services, this includes a broad, broad range of fees, from fingerprinting in the police station, to copying fees, um, for, uh, for getting documents, um, from City Hall. Our basic recommendation is that council adopt a no-subsidy standard for most of these general fees, and that's a decision point for tonight. The, uh, the rationale is that most general services are particular to the individual requesting that service and have little measurable community benefit. So if somebody is applying for a job somewhere else and needs to get fingerprinted, there's no reason that the rest of the taxpayers in the community should help subsidize their fingerprinting for them to go get a job. There are some exceptions. One that we'd certainly recommend is that the new or annual inspection, fire inspection for a business or a facility, receive a 100% subsidy for the first inspection, um, and then a full rate for follow-on inspections. That encourages folks to ensure that they get their, their businesses inspected by the fire department, gives the fire department the opportunity to see what's in there. But, so, um, the key point on this is recommend no subsidy, except for that one exception in the area of general services. Same thing in the area of community development and public works. These are the fees that we just had a large discussion on, planning fees, building fees, impact fees, and, uh, and we do not recommend any subsidy in, uh, in those areas, either for community development, or for the public works portion, which is usually engineering review of community development actions. Keynote here is that most cities, well, let me say that Slow, Pismo Beach, and Atascadero all have full-cost recovery models for community development and public works. That is, we will be doing the same thing as our sister cities in having no subsidy or requiring full-cost recovery for our planning items. The, the staff does not recommend any, any blanket exceptions, however, it's important to point out that, uh, that nothing would prevent the council from, by council action, waiving fees in certain instances. So if there was a certain nonprofit entity that we wanted to attract to Morro Bay, to, and we wanted to waive the planning fees for them, then we could do that by council action. Or, or another business, um, there's nothing that prevents us from waiving fees in the future by council act, or by, I should say subsidizing fees in the future in this area by council action. In the area of recommendation, or recommendation of recreation, um, so this includes fees for specific recreation programs, teen center, kids' clubs, sports leagues, the holiday tree lighting, and includes the, the facility rental fees, primarily for this building and for the community services building. Our recommendation is that you ask the Rec and Parks Commission to review, uh, the recreation department's current cost recovery and subsidy allocation model, and make recommendations to rebalance cost recovery with a broad community benefit. So the decision here is to send it down to the Rec, or the Rec Commission for their input. Uh, a couple of considerations as you do that. First, the recreation and facility rental currently span, spans no subsidy to 100% subsidy. So it's, it's sort of very broad. Some programs are completely subsidized, and some are not subsidized, maybe a few are not subsidized at all. The teen center is really on one end of that spectrum. The teen center is, um, is free and is subsidized at about 95%. Um, so about $70,000 a year of the 73, 73,500 operating cost comes from general tax revenue, not from any fees associated with that, with the use of that, um, program. Youth and adult sports are all subsidized at about the 20% to 30% level. Our fees don't well differentiate between our residents and non-residents. Fees for both should be reassessed. Management partners will tell us that as well. There should be a benefit for being a resident when you use our programs. Those are, because it's our residents that, whose tax revenue supports those programs. Facility rental fees might be subsidized too heavily. For example, the use of this room is subsidized at about 50% for almost, for many, many groups. Most groups qualify for that, that fairly significant subsidy, to keep the lights on, to have staff here, um, to open the doors, to provide for capital replacement and, and general maintenance and operations of the building. We, we should compare like facilities in the private sector, for example, Kids Club versus the United Methodist Children's Center, for example. Um, and, and, and all of these are considerations of why I really would recommend that the Rec Commission wrestle with this a little bit, um, to, to ensure that we've got the right levels. We need to also reassess our basic fees, not just the subsidies in the recreation department. Our program fees, our program fees, i.e. how much we charge, have increased 3.2% in general over two years. Simply the cost of labor for the folks that are providing those services has increased 15% over the same two years. Minimum wage has gone from $8.75 to $10 next year, but we are, are, the cost, the, our charge, the fees we charge have, have barely increased, only 3.2% over those two years. So, uh, so the Rec Commission, along with the Rec Department and me, need to, to look hard at what the right level is for those services, just what the cost is for those services, much less that, what, what the appropriate subsidy level is for those services. Harbor, sort of similar to, uh, to recreation, um, these are fees for, uh, for moorage rents, for, um, slips, for ties, tie-ups at city pier, um, for live-aboard fees, launch ramp fees. Staff generally recommends that harbor fees, um, receive no subsidy. That, that would be a decision point, I would say recreational harbor fees. Staff does recommend that the council ask the harbor advisory board to review in detail the harbor fee schedule and to make recommendations to the city council, especially or particularly in, in the area of subsidy for services provided to commercial fishing activities. A few considerations there. So some harbor services do not have a substantial community-wide benefit. Live-aboard fees, for example, they are benefiting the person that lives aboard. The, uh, the launch ramp services, there, there's an argument there, um, but, uh, it's great to have a launch ramp, um, but generally, I'd say that whoever is launching their boat ought to bear most of the cost of launching their boat there, and not the rest, the rest of the residents. There are services that, without a measurable community benefit, should generally not be subsidized. The city currently provides slip rental subsidy of around 66% for qualified commercial fishermen, at least compared to fair market value. Um, so for example, and I've got some actual different numbers, I'll, I'll use the, some slightly different set of numbers here, so the, actually, no, I'll use those that are printed right there. Um, a, I think it's about a 36-foot commercial fishing boat in a city slip, um, costs $160 a month. A similar boat in a privately operated slip next door would be about $450 a month. So, uh, there's a fairly significant subsidy in place for, uh, for commercial fishing vessels in our, um, city slips. The city also needs to make a better assessment of the cost of providing those city slips, what's it really cost to provide that service, um, and should consider the effect of those subsidized flip, slip fees on the broader operations of the Tylenol Trust. The, uh, the city provides also un-metered, um, and generally free electricity and water in most of, uh, most of our slips. So in all of our commercial slips, it's 160 bucks a month with free electricity, free water, un-metered. If you tie up to the city tee-pier, um, then, uh, then actually, if you tie up, the cost of tying up is more than the, than the slip, and you pay a flat fee for electricity if you hook up of $2.75, $2.95 a day. But we, uh, we also ought to look at metering, um, both electricity and water especially, considering the, the drought conditions. And finally, I'd say that, that like we are with water rates, the HAB can, could consider and recommend a gradual lowering of subsidies, if they choose to recommend a change in the subsidies at all. So, uh, so as we send this down to the HAB, these are really some notes that, that Eric can take to the HAB, um, but areas that you may want them to consider. Quick discussion on enterprise funds. Bottom line is that, uh, we're already working on rates, on water and sewer rates, that, that the fee schedule, there's been, Bartle Wells also updated the fee schedule, that will come to you in the master fee schedule in July, and, um, we are not allowed to use enterprise funds to subsidize the, anything else in the enterprise fund. If we wanted to use general funds to subsidize enterprise funds fees, we could do that, but we don't recommend it. So we recommend that there, the city does not use general fund revenues to subsidize any enterprise fund fees. Finally, accessibility, accessibility to appeals. The city's fee schedule should have specific provisions to ensure that certain appeal fees and other fees, frankly, are subject to affordability requirements. That'll ensure that low-income individuals are not deprived of due process should they seek to appeal various items. The staff is researching such a provision, and we will include it in the master fee schedule update in July 15, and in fact, will include it in the follow-on, um, item that we'll bring to the council on this subject in June. So quick summary, recommend no subsidies in general city service fees, no subsidies in community development and public works, with, with a couple of the exceptions that are noted. That Rec and Recreation and Facility Rental Fees get sent down to Rec and Parks Commission for their review, same for Harbor, and, uh, that there be no subsidies in the enterprise fund fees. A couple of exceptions, we talked about the exception for, uh, fire inspection for new businesses, a 75% subsidy for appeals of staff or commissioned decisions in the area of planning. So we, we want to make sure people are not penalized to bring an appeal and have accessibility, and then appropriate subsidies for certain appeals subject to affordability requirements. And then the next step is, following the Harbor Advisory Board and Rec Commission input, the staff would bring the, uh, the fee subsidy decision, um, as one single package to the council in June of 15, in the form of a resolution, um, in which you resolve to set the fee subsidy levels for various programs in the city. So we recommend that you would make a motion that, uh, that encapsulated the summary page and the exception page. And that is a complete staff report, ready for actually, first, your questions, and then public comment.
Thanks, Dave. Your staff report was much, much better than mine.
No.
And you had all the fancy logos on it, so, yeah. Yeah. And you had all the fancy logos on it, so, yeah, yeah, thank you. Any questions for staff? John?
Ms. Buckingham, question regarding the, and I don't know if this falls under the lease policy for the Harbor Advisory Board, but in the Harbor Lease Management Policy adopted October 2001, it speaks to the fact that the city council reorganized the Harbor Commission into the Harbor Advisory Board and took lease management issues out of the board's purview to streamline the city responsiveness and improve lease management. Would that apply to this review? If so...
I don't think so. The fees we're talking about are harbor operations fees, not Tydlands Trust lease fees.
Okay. The other question I had was, have you considered the notion of cost recovery for certain duties and responsibilities, for instance, arrests? And the arrestee paying restitution to the city for the cost of the arrest, which in professional licensure circles happens routinely. When physicians are sanctioned, they pay for the process that they go through to get sanctioned, et cetera. Just out of curiosity with regard to that, is that...
I don't believe we've thought about that in either fire or police.
Hi there, how are you doing?
Hi, I'm well.
So specifically, getting, sometimes squeezing some money out of an arrestee is an interesting process. In fact, just this week, we're going to small claims court on some restitution for DUI arrests. So yes, we do do it in many cases. It's court-ordered, and now we're going to have to take some of those to small claims court.
I'll continue on the fire side. There are sections of the fire code that does allow us to do cost recovery for folks that do break the law or break the fire code, and we do that often, such as climbing on the rock.
I just wondered if there would be further opportunity there for new fees than just for future review things.
No.
Yeah, thank you. I would like to hear a little bit of conversation about transit.
So, thank you for that. I've got a bunch of data on my iPad that we've been working on, have been working on this week. I would like to bring that to you separately. I will tell you that I think it was $250,000-ish in 2013-14 with a cost recovery of $18,000. And I'm looking forward to doing the math. I'm also looking forward to getting a couple Uber drivers or others in Moro Bay, because we could probably make that $250,000, that $250,000 could be spent on streets. Not all of it, because we would still, we would have to rely on county transportation, is that right? Rob?
Yeah, we have a requirement to pay our portion for RTA, so that comes off the top of our transit money, and certain portions of the money that we get from the state, we can't use for road projects. You can use LTF, but you can't use STA or the other way around. It's escaped me now with those acronyms.
So it's a great question. I drew some facts out of my head, some numbers out of my head. I will not say that those are facts, but my intent was to come back to you at some time to look at transportation as a separate issue.
And be safe to assume at that point, we'd go through a similar process with the Public Works Advisory Board?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then to follow up, just to make sure, because this is a pretty hot-button issue, actually, you wouldn't realize it by the size of the audience tonight, but it has been in the past and it will be when we bring this forward as we go, and I'm glad to see that you're thinking about ways to either phase some components in for populations that aren't quite used to this, or in others to look at an affordability component. I'd like to hear some discussion about how you intend to notice so that we can get in front of this and make sure that, for example, with the teen center, they're aware of the discussion going to the Harbor Advisory Board, and they can participate so we don't end up in a situation where we're coming to the council after the fact of those conversations and having to, you know, wade through the first round of public input to come up with some decisions.
Those are great points, and we'll do that.
Matt? Christine?
Yes, hi. Thanks for bringing this forward. My question is, part of the reason we're looking at this is likely because of the forecast we received from management partners on the 31st of March. So I was wondering, where is that online so people can take a look at that? That's my number-one question. Is it buried in the staff report page? Probably is. So that's really what's driving this, is that we know where we stand for the next 10 years, and some things have to be reviewed more carefully. So how do we disseminate that information? And the reason I ask, and then I'll let you respond to the full question, is if we're sending it down to any of the advisory boards, I would want them to understand what was reported to us in the management or partner's 10-year forecast. And then, not just these two that are mentioned this evening, but all of the boards, ultimately then, all of the community. So I know that we saw a PowerPoint, and it wasn't a regular council meeting, it was a special council meeting, so sometimes people aren't quite aware of that. I think that needs to be front and center on our website. It's a hot topic, you know, maybe we need to do some shifting, because the pain and suffering that may come from even just mentioning this, I mean, there's a reason. It isn't necessarily that we're looking to raise revenue. This would perhaps be, you know, recovering things that we're already doing, not necessarily raising revenue, but the reason behind an increase, especially in development fees and things like that, is when you're going to, again, see folks coming out from, you know, certain trades. We really need to be clear that the reason we're doing it is because of what we received from management partners. If, you know, the council at that meeting, we were all in agreement with that report. I don't think we had any questions about the validity of that data. We were believing in the data. So that's my question in general about financially, these fees.
Great. So first, we'll absolutely get the PowerPoint up on the, and put it front and center on the website. And we're continuing to do outreach, and I know you are too, to the community on our fiscal condition, our near-term and our long-term fiscal condition. This item was on the agenda, at least on my agenda, bring to you before the 10-year forecast. This item was on the agenda, actually, I'd like to tell you it was my brilliant idea, the staff's brilliant idea. I'll confess, so we got a bit of a pre-brief from management partners, sort of, here's a few of the initial things that we've seen, not on the forecast side, but on the overall recommendation side. I think that was mid-February. And one of the things that they brought up was this, was fee subsidies just as a matter of good public policy. And so we put that on the agenda in order to bring it to you as a better way to manage our master fee schedule than essentially for us, the staff, to say, oh, well, let's, you know, subsidize this one this much, and seems like a lot of pressure on this one, let's put it there, but to have a more disciplined public policy approach that, where the council sets a policy for subsidy in various areas. So the primary purpose was to do things disciplined and in order. A result of that will likely be a fairly significant increase in, not in the big scheme of things, increase in revenue, but an important one in the year going forward. So I do appreciate the importance of continuing to do good outreach. And, yes, Eric and Joe, I will probably find myself with those, that Harbor Advisory Board and that Rec Commission also, because I appreciate that tying this, although it wasn't the primary purpose, tying this to our fiscal condition is important.
Great. Those are my last questions, but I'll have more stuff for discussion. Thanks.
All right, thanks. I don't have questions, I have comments, and I'm looking forward to Ms. Winholt's comments because she was on council when this came before during our 2008 Management Partners report.
That's true. My name's Betty Winholtz, and we did do a cost analysis study at that time, and the willpower of that council at the time, we got fees in. The staff or the consultant who did the study recommended 50% of what was actual recovery of subsidies, and even at the 50%, the council did not have the will to even do 50% because of the political ramifications. So as much as I understand what you're trying to do here, you're doing political suicide if you go with something that's logical and purely from your head and only because it's consistent, because a community is not about that. A community is about where the services need to go for people who can and cannot afford them. And for example, your public appeals, you know, to raise that to $3,000 or $750 is outrageous. You know, $250 is too much, in my opinion, because it, what has to happen now is, groups of people throw in money together to make one appeal, because one person can't afford the $250, okay? And why it's gone up $7 kind of blows my mind, I don't know how that happened. The fisherman thing is just the opposite. You know, we've consistently lowered and lowered and lowered how much they have to pay, so there's been a favoritism there when there shouldn't have been, in my opinion, again. So I think it's a real can of worms. I'm surprised this isn't a public hearing, that it's, you know, at 10:30 at night. It should come back as a public hearing, get input that way. Maybe you don't want to handle it because it is a huge red-hot button, and maybe you'd rather piecemeal it down to the different commissions, I get that, but I don't think you can be as systematic as you would desire to be. I think, I think there's more involved here, and it has to do with public service, it has to do with the services of a community and what community is about. And I understand that you're in financial trouble. We were in financial trouble back in 2008, and we looked at cutting as much as we looked at increasing revenues, and this is definitely a way of increasing revenues, not just cost recovery. And if you guys have had a bad budget for the last three years you've been in office, then I'm sorry that that's happened. I know that you were, we handed the last council a good budget, that council did some bad things, and I'm not sure where you guys have been doing the last three years because I haven't paid attention. So be careful.
Thanks, Betty.
Good evening, City Council and Mr. Mayor of City Staff. My name is Jeremiah O'Brien. I represent the commercial fishing industry. And before I go on to what I was going to say, I just would like to correct something that I think might have been misspoken by the previous speaker. And our costs have not gone down in the city, they've gone up, and they go up every single year, and they have for many, many years. We, our fees go up according to the Consumer Price Index every single year, and we've made an agreement in the past with the city to go up accordingly. That's certainly a matter of record. And I would recommend the city council and Mr. Mayor, that you would, I urge you to go with the city staff recommendation, which was to bring this to the Harbor Advisory Board, because I don't think three minutes is long enough right now to address this issue, and I'm looking forward to addressing it in that venue with Mr. Buckingham present. We never considered ourselves subsidized. We don't compare ourselves to private yacht slips and tie-ups. Those private yacht areas are adjacent to large buildings and businesses that they're owned by, that pay large fees, lease fees and so forth, to the city. And that would be the reason their fees, and they can do it. The commercial fishing industry, I don't think should be charged on the basis of what you can get, what you can get out of them. I think they should be charged a reasonable fee, and I believe that's what we pay currently. Just because you live in a fancy area doesn't mean we necessarily should be paying a fancy fee. I believe we bring a lot of service to the city, and anyways, I urge you to follow the city staff recommendation and bring this to the Harbor Advisory Board. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeremiah. Any other questions?
And I just, I did watch the, I was at the first part of the, was it March 31st was the management, I was at the first part of that meeting, I had to go, but I did watch the whole meeting at home. And so it's on AGP Video, people can access it on, if they have internet, they can go to AGP Video and access that and watch it on their computers. And I would encourage people to do that, too. It was really interesting. And one of the things that I thought that I got out of that was that that entire 10-year forecast was based, one of the important elements that it was based on was that building continued in Moro Bay. Is it, is that right? Is that, I mean, our, that the building department continues building? And I was kind of, I thought that our building department had been losing money over the years, and we need to bring our fee schedule up. So I'm kind of confused, I'm really confused, and so you guys must really be confused, or maybe you know a lot more than I do. But anyway, this is confusing, and so I kind of agree with Betty as far as the public probably isn't going to receive this, just, it was a great report, but the logic on it with our community is going to, you're going to have to work on a presentation, I think, and understanding the financial thing. And I also, I would say that over the last two or three years, it's been the deferred maintenance and the costs that we've had to put into our wastewater treatment plant. And Cayucas knew that they were going to put us in this position, so I would say ex-nay on the agreement with, MOU with the Cayucas, okay?
Thanks, Marla. Any more for public comment? We'll close public comment, bring it back to council for discussion.
If I could just correct, correct one thing. So I had a misprint in the presentation. The actual cost of an appeal right now is $257. I was really just trying to use an example here. So the example still stands, it's just the numbers are wrong. The actual cost of an appeal is $257, not $3,000. So a 75% subsidy of an appeal would be, bring it down to $64. So I apologize for the, I was trying to just have an example of how a subsidy would work and chose the wrong one.
It gets attention.
Just making sure everybody's awake.
Okay, all right, thanks. Discussion. Thanks for bringing this forward. Betty, thanks for your comments on the previous fees and how it came forward. I was thinking about that. I recollect the 2008 Management Partners Report was driving a lot of the fee structure, and maybe my recollection wasn't quite as correct, but the... But the impact fees were brought back, and it was pretty much of a full house. But that was met with a lot more discussion than what we're seeing tonight. I will say this is about fiscal responsibility. You know, we do have to address some service... How we provide services for the community. The Management Partners Report, 10-year budget forecast that we just reviewed on March 31st. It paints the picture that we need to be reminded of. And so the fee structures that are laid out for us, I'm in agreement with what we have as the staff recommendation. I would... But I would also add that this doesn't come back on the consent agenda and that we do bring this back as a public hearing item for, you know, final review and adoption. So... But I would agree with what we have on here. I also, as far as going to the Harbor Advisory Board on these, the one thing, you know, I don't know what clarification we need on the water meters and electric meters, but, you know, that may not be fees at this point. But I feel as though that should be a necessity as far as moving forward. We should probably... We should be getting that kind of cost recovery on our utilities. And that shouldn't be just kind of an open tap, so to speak. So I would hope... And I guess the question would be, since we're pertaining just to the fees on this, direction on that particular item there, how would we get direction to... Do you want me to agendize something like that as far as utilities and the Harbor Advisory Board, et cetera?
No, not yet. We'll do some research, and we will likely give you the option in the budget discussion of spending the money to put meters there.
Got it. Okay. All right. We'll see. Then that's good. We'll see that. Good. Appreciate that. That's all I have for discussion. Christine?
Because there's two issues. There's a capital cost of putting the meters in, and then there's the whole question of recovering the cost. So I'm going to presume that... Well, you're going to get to make the decision. If you approve the capital cost of putting meters in, then I'm presuming you want to recover the cost of
Absolutely.
that electricity and water flowing on out.
Yep. Christine?
Great. Thanks. If you could entertain one more question about the fishing slips. So it's a general question, and I'm almost a little embarrassed to ask it. But how... When we talk about our fishing fleet, how many folks would you estimate are in city-owned slips and how many are not in city-owned slips? Or is everybody in a city-owned slip? I know we've talked about this before in a different way, and sorry I didn't get to you earlier.
No, it's not a... The only bad question is the unasked question. Thank you and good evening. We have 52 slips that we lease out, rent out to the commercial fishermen directly. Our two piers have about 20 to 25 boats each, depending on seasons and who's around. And then everything else along the waterfront is all along the lease sites, up and down, that, you know, have the different bits of slips. Some of them rent to commercial boats, some of them rent to recreational boats, some of them are combination.
Okay, so out of a total of 52, that ours are... Ours are full?
Correct. We have 100% occupancy.
Okay. And then out of... So and they're all commercial?
Yeah. By municipal code regulation, they have to be rented out only to commercial boats.
Right. So then how many would you assume might be elsewhere in the bay paying, I guess, the market rate, fishing boats?
Commercial fishing boats? It's going to be a bit of a guess off the top of my head. Jeremiah may know better because he knows everybody. But I'm going to say there's maybe another 20 out there, spread amongst all the other lease sites and maybe even back in the State Park Marina.
Okay. And do you think some of those people are on the waitlist for the city slip?
Yeah, some are on the waitlist. Generally, our waitlist folks are more the pier boats. Yeah, there's some of them are interspersed here and there.
Okay, great. Thanks. That helps.
And some of them are out of town. I mean, we've got people on the waitlist that aren't here at all, and they want to relocate.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Thank you very much.
So probably not lost on you, but the city slips are at 100% with the waiting list. People tie up along the pier for months or years waiting for a commercial slip to come available because the rates are so much better than somewhere else. And I'm not making a judgment on... I'm not presuming to judge your decision on what the appropriate subsidy level is for our commercial fishing fleet. I think it's something that is worthy of our discussion and our study in our city as we look at this, at the whole issue.
Okay. And I'm sure we'll have that full discussion at the Harbor Advisory Board. That will come up, and we'll see this again. Okay. What I wanted to spend a minute on is the rec programs. And who doesn't love our rec programs? So truly, I mean, I participate as a regular citizen in rec and numerous ways. So what I just wanted to sort of mention to council is my new liaison as the Rec and Parks Commissioner. I would suggest that you go on to... I just picked up the March report, staff report for the March meeting. And you will find the participation report on all of the rec programs, and maybe you've already seen it. So I wanted just to clarify a few things with Mr. Woods, and thank you very much, Joe, for responding really quickly because I think it will help us. This will go to the rec commission. They're used to seeing the report. But I think it's really important for us to prepare for it to come back to kind of check it out because this is major quality of life issues and things that touch people that are fun beyond having to pay for, you know, a utility bill. I mean, this is a big part of our city, and it's a service we've been providing. You can see that the service we're providing, you know, we're certainly putting some general fund money into that quality of life issue. So I just want us to be really prepared for that discussion when it comes back. So Mr. Woods, number... When we look at the participation report, and council doesn't have it, but I'll just... The example I asked you earlier, so we were talking about, let's say, Kids Club, which I will confess, I am a huge user of Kids Club and have been for four or five years and do find it fabulous, Kids Club. So Kids Club before school, I have, let's see, this year to date, the number I see under participation is 1,736. Now, I know that that's not kids in our... Because I know the facility's not that big. But could you tell us, moving forward, when I see Kids Club before school, which means the drop-off prior school, what does the 1,736 number represent? You said it represents number of participations, and I'm still a little unclear.
We generally count participations for the number of kids. So if you had 10 kids on Monday, that's 10 participations. If you had those same kids came on Tuesday, you've got 20 participations. At the end of the week, you have 50 participations. And that's the representation that we're showing you in our report.
Okay.
So it is the number of children, but they can be counted twice because the program is more than once in the week or the month.
Okay, great. So I think, you know, maybe for... So it's like maybe some assistance when this comes back and maybe some things that I'm looking really for our rec commission to dig into is how many families would be using Kids Club? And of those families, how many of them might have more than one child, for example? So that information to me coming back, I would like to hear our commissioners weigh in on that. How many families are using that facility? How many families are using Kids Camp? So we kind of get a sense of what's the need in the community. And then tie that into how many scholarships are being given for Kids Camp or Kids Club? And I know that you've given that to me here as well. And this is the kind of stuff I think will really help us coming back on this one for the council. And I'd like to hear the commissioners dig into it. So for example, you're showing me Kids Club, because we're using that example, the number of scholarships awarded in each month. And of course, this is all confidential, so it's no matter to me whom is getting the scholarship, but just in general so we can see what the need is in the community. So Kids Club, I see, you know, in August, there's 15 scholarships, and it amounts to $1,380. So that's funded by the Morro Bay Community Foundation and all of us who participate in their fundraisers. So my question would be of, like, how can you compare apples to apples? So 15 scholarships go to how many families, in essence? So if we're doing... I guess I'm just looking for really diving into the numbers. What's the need for childcare and how is the city meeting that need? And then what's the need for childcare scholarship-wise? And if we didn't provide those scholarships, would these folks not be able to give kids a quality place to go before and after school?
Well, we did see a drop in participation when the scholarship amount was lowered. And when the foundation was trying to clean up the program a little bit because a lot of folks were participating in the program who may not have been eligible, a little bit higher in the income. So we lowered the scholarship rate, and participation just dropped. At 20%, we did not have it. But it's an increase. Right now, the scholarship for the foundation is at 30% for scholarships for enrichment programs. In sports programs, they're at 60%. So if your child is participating in any kind of sports, and you're eligible for a 60% scholarship, and that's based on a free or reduced lunch program.
Okay.
And that whole process has been expedited as well. So we work very closely with the foundation as far as how we deliver the scholarships, how much, and how it's presented. We've got a lot of bilingual information out there right now.
Okay, great. Yeah, and I think it would be helpful for the commissioners to see how many families are participating, how many are getting scholarships, so we know the depth of the need. That's kind of what I'm looking for. And then again, you know, it was mentioned in the staff report, who are... Who's our competition out there? So what does UMCC offer? They're, you know, right next door, you know, cost-wise. And you don't have to answer all this tonight because this will all come back. But, you know, what are we comparing ourselves to and what do we provide? And then also, you know, some, I know other programs in other cities in our county, they use the why. So have we looked into that? And what was that... Do we deem at some point that wasn't worth it, or have we not looked into it? So these are all the kinds of things that, for me, the key is to provide the service. If our community needs it, that's the discussion we have to have. How do we do it? And then what are the other... You know, what are options to providing the service to our residents?
We will certainly... We have looked at some of those options. We will continue to look at more options. We'll have that discussion with the RPC. Just to let you know that the Kids Club and Kids Camp programs are currently at a 70% to 79% cost recovery and generally perform above that standard.
Okay, great. And then, you know, there are lots of options, too, in terms of rec as well, you know, what... You know, Little League, for example, is all volunteer. It doesn't... I don't believe the city... Do we charge them for the use of the field?
We certainly do.
Okay. So there again, you have volunteers covering the program in that way for Little League, right?
Right.
Okay. But for our, for example, in Los Osos, I think soccer is run all volunteer?
Soccer in Los Osos is Cal South.
So they pay someone?
And well, they do. And we're also Cal South. And we're Cal South because we want to participate in interleague competition with them and with Templeton and Cambria and Atascadero. So the Cal South is important organization for us to get into as far as soccer goes.
Right. And that's versus AYSO that I think is volunteer-run, correct?
It is, but it's not...
Sorry, I'm getting in the weeds.
But the ASY...
Oh, no. It's important, though.
But the AYSO is not a Los Osos program.
Okay. I guess in general, I'm getting some nonverbal communication here from my colleagues. But I think the point here is these are really important issues to wrestle with for us. And I would like really get depth, in-depth discussion of that at the commission level so it helps us have the discussion when it comes here. So specifically digging into the numbers, specifically asking them to consider options and make recommendations. And I apologize if it got too into the weeds for you, but I live this stuff.
I would like to question one thing. It is that I want us to look at service delivery models in recreation. That is a related, but can be a separate issue to the fee subsidy and fee discussion question for this coming year. So we're going to have to put out a master fee schedule on the 1st of July that says, here's what the fees are for this year. We're not going to be able to do a good job analyzing other service delivery models. So I would like the commission to look initially at appropriate subsidy levels and cost recovery number, you know, numbers for this year. And then on our goals, one of the things that we've got to do is to look at alternate service delivery models. But that's a broader and deeper issue.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thanks, Christine. John?
And if I was giving you nonverbal...
It wasn't you.
Question... Or maybe the comment I had. Questions are done. Comment I would have is I would like to know what 100% cost recovery would be. And then obviously, what's coming back is that information. And then you're asking us to make a determination on what subsidies you'd like us to consider for all of the costs that you bring back where there is a subsidy. Simple. Correct. Good. Thank you very much, certainly for that.
Matt?
Okay. We don't have to have linear questions. I'm okay with the elliptical approach. So Johnny, you have a good question because looking on the fiscal impact on page one of staff report saying it's we could collect around 200 grand, more or less. Is that kind of what we're saying? And then so that's one question. And then next question, is that based on everybody going to 100% or do we have no subsidies at all?
No, that is based on planning, community development and public works being 0% subsidy, 100% cost recovery. And it's based on a general in... Not subsidies. General increase in revenue in the Recreation Department. How we achieve that revenue increase is to be determined, either through a higher fee or a differing subsidy level. But it goes to the point that in the past two years, our labor costs have gone up 15% and our revenues have increased 3.2%. That's unsustainable. And so however we do it, we've increased... We're projecting increased revenues in recreation writ large. Rental for this room, rental for community services rooms, program fees for Kids Club. However we get there, we've got to increase some revenue in recreation because our... Either that or we need to take general fund money from somewhere else, like streets or fire or police in order to cover that loss.
Okay, that's... I guess that was my next question, giving in terms of building and planning, in terms of cutting out, getting 100% cost recovery and looking at some of the... And then I guess that sort of fiscal calculus will be done at each department-level harbor, recreation, especially considering, Noah, your talk about the transit. You know, there are community goods that aren't cost-effective, but then there are some other fees. So that's going to be part of the larger calculus. That's what you're saying?
I think so.
I understand why you say I think so because it's going to be a long process. But you want to have that done by this next fiscal year.
Well, remember, one of the slides sort of said that we think we have a good and fair idea of what our costs are. I didn't say perfect. And I'll tell you very frankly that there was a point six weeks ago when many of us, including some of you, because we were telling you, thought that we were at 30% cost recovery in the Planning Department and that all we had to do was move the switch to zero subsidies in planning, and we would have $600,000 in revenue. That's what it looked like until we actually looked at the professional cost recovery study that was done in 2008-ish, '04. And that study was not so professional, and it made horrendous assumptions that jacked the... What they... So, okay, this is an example. I'll make up something, a subliminal fee. They decided that that fee was... They said that was going to be $7,000. And then when we look at Pismo and Slow in Atascadero... And then, when we look at Pismo and Slow and Atascadero, we realize that, and look at, quickly, look at us internally, we said, that's not a $7,000 fee, that's a $3,500 fee. And we're currently charging $3,300. So, we thought, based on what was, what is this thick of a cost recovery or cost, yeah, cost recovery analysis, cost of services analysis, that was, we paid some professional organization a whole lot to do. We thought that our planning department fees were way low. Turns out that they're low, but they're not way low. And what Frank, what they had did is, they had said that this permit X was going to take three hours of a planner's time, three hours of Scott's time, three hours of my time. It's how horrible it was. And then, therefore, it's going to cost 10 grand. Actually, it takes three hours of a planner's time, 30 minutes of Scott's time, and 10 minutes of my time. That's the truth. So, I'm going to stop talking.
Okay. Noah?
Yeah, thank you. So, just to sum things up really quickly, I think the fee subsidy policy is really an important discussion for us to have. We're going to need to wrestle with the quality of life issues that are within that, whether it's transit or recreation or so forth. And it's going to be something that we should be prepared to have, have a goal in mind, but it's going to take some work to get there. And I think the public outreach is really important, because we, if there's one thing that we learned with the whole business licensing process was, we need to make sure we're out in front of that from the very beginning and give people the chance to sound off on it, so we can come up with a decision with their voice in the room. So, I'm going to expect that we're going to work really hard on that level. And ultimately, we're at a completely different time I heard Ms. Winholz talk about in 2007 and 2008. And that was a completely different scenario. There was almost a million dollars coming in from the power plant at that time. And they didn't have the Cal Pers bubble of benefits and things that we're wrestling with right now. They hadn't made cuts that now we already have in place. So, we have all these different situations, and it's a much more challenging scenario for the community to deal with. And we're going to have to ask the community to understand that as much as, we're going to have to understand that there are areas that we're going to have to subsidize, because people depend on them. And it's a quality of life thing that is really important for them to be able to continue to be functional. And I think transit is one of those, but we're all going to come at that from a different area. And I think that public outreach component is going to help flesh that out.
Comments? Do you have any more?
Just a follow-up comment that I, I think it's important, and that is daylighting the management partners' report, not just online, but I think somehow at a meeting processing that with a presentation here would be extremely important, so the community begins to feel the tension for change that I feel. And that you may be waiting for the conclusion, which would be the recommendations, before you, that happens. But I would suggest that the sooner we do that, the better, because that really is, I think, what you were talking about is letting the community know specifically what's driving the look at all of these issues. And that's this report.
You'll get that in a study session on the 26th of May, the second meeting, second council meeting of May. Management Partners will be here for an hour and a half study session to present, not the budget part, but the final recommend, management analysis part of their report. And we'll also try to do a good job with providing you some of those, I mean, I just think that minimum wage fact's a key fact. So, our recreation department has four full-time employees. The other $640,000, I think, of budgeted pay this year is part-time pay, which is all directly tied to the minimum wage. And when minimum wage goes up 15% over two years, we've got to do something about recovering that cost, or it goes up 15% over two more years. And that money has got to come from somewhere. And if it doesn't come from those folks that are using the services, or from the gifts of others like a foundation, then, and I'm not trying to be alarmist, but it's coming from fire, police, streets, and the other services that provide broad community benefit.
I guess what I was requesting or suggesting is that this be daylighted, fair? A shorter presentation for the community to be able to see it at a council meeting?
And, you know, even our advisory boards, you know, need to get a flavor of all that. Need to see all that as well. Yeah. Concluding on discussion, want to take a motion for staff recommendation. Any additional comments to that? I know we had some direction on Wreckin' Park and what we'd like to see harbor transit. We know we're coming back on. Any other comments that we just need to clarify? Seeing none?
But we'll see it again, it comes back, and there'll be opportunity for public input. Perfect, great.
So, at this point, we take a motion for staff recommendation? So moved? Second? Okay. So, we have a motion. I've made the motion. Matt made the second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries. Item D3.
Mayor, could I make one quick comment? So, I'm looking at the council schedule here, I'm listening to council member headings. Concerned, concerned, I've heard from several times about, how do we convince the community? There's our, we've got some fiscal issues. I'm not sure what else to do, so I've written two Bay News articles on this. We're doing things on the website. I would be happy to do a presentation at council, maybe before we get too deep into the budget process, first council meeting. If you think that a synthesized presentation of the 10-year budget forecast to you, you've already seen it and heard it, but it might be good for all of us before we walk into the budget process, the budget hearing, to do that at the beginning of a council meeting. We can either make it an announcement, or I can make it a presentation and just do it at the beginning, or you can agendize that.
I think we can discuss that and just slot it into presentation, probably would fit very well.
There's probably more viewers then than now.
Yep. Yeah. Great. So, considering where we're at, we've got D3, and to see if we can get through this. And item D3 is Eric Endersby. Eric, take it away.
All right.
Kathy, thanks for sticking around.
Thank you. I'll be as quick as I can. So, what we have for you tonight is consideration and direction on the future of lease site 102, 102W, which is 1,001 Front Street, Central Coast Seafood, Giovanni's Fish Market. Two different lease sites there with the DeGuermer family. This is the southernmost one that incorporates a small portion of the market building itself. It's kind of an oddball one, but mostly water. It's a Pipkin lease entered into, not quite 50 years ago. It expires in 2018. So, like I say, it's a mostly water only lease. The rest is private property. It's the one exception on the waterfront that's not public property. It's, that was dry land before World War II, and so, that's still privately owned. Two lease policies come into play on consideration of the future of the site, because it is mostly water only. And that's kind of the beach street, or the southern water only lease policies, where the upland owner controls the access and utilities. And we encourage continuation and enhancement of the existing re-independent uses there. It's not really suitable for large development, which is the case with this lease site. The policy that applies to the beach street to tidelands leases, which is really where this lease is located, the tenants are encouraged to develop public benefit uses and not to let the premises degrade as the lease site runs down. Certainly, that has not been the case with this leasehold, although there's been significant improvements over the years on that site. It's been well-run, the private property is well-maintained as well. So, those two policies sort of come into play. As far as meeting the standards for renegotiation with this tenant, it's payment of fees, lease fees, which, again, it's a Pipkin lease, so it's fairly below standard lease fees in today's day and age. But the tenant's been not a problem in that regard. There's a mixed use of services there that meet the goals of the city, there's support of the commercial fishing industry. There's a little bit of tourism with the shirt shop downstairs, there's the fish market and restaurant, which is another good visitor-serving use. And there's a fuel dock, although that's not on this exact lease site. Combined, this tenant has been providing those services for, gosh, I guess, probably over 30, 35 years with the DeGuermer family. And the quality of services and value to the public, I think they give a wide range of services. So, they meet, you know, a lot of those bullet points on renegotiating with the tenant for a new lease. The tenant hasn't proposed a redevelopment project per se on that site, much like the lease site we considered in closed session. It's largely developed out, there's not much more to do on that site. The wharf incorporates maybe a third of the site on the water. And then, the slips that were put there over the last four or five years really take up the existing space from north to south, east to west. The tenant, several years ago, did a significant redevelopment project in providing the harbor walk space along the backside and some public seating and public access along the backside. So, there's not much more room to grow there. The tenant is proposing to continue on with the existing uses and enhancement of those. And they have done substantial wharf and piling maintenance over the years there. There's not, you know, major issues like we've had at some of our other lease sites where the wheels have been run off. The wheels definitely haven't been run off at this site. The, again, the fish unloading infrastructure next door, private property businesses, all have added up to a good lease site use there. We will see increased lease site revenue as the Pipkin leases retired and we get onto a modern lease, what percent gross revenue requirements. Per the current policy, we're bringing this, future of this site to the council and to the public for input and direction on which way to proceed. Those two directions are the staff recommendation, which is work with the existing tenant, moving forward with management of that site and a new lease, or put the site out for RFP to see if there's any public interest in developing it. Again, we're kind of caught in that conundrum where we don't control the land and a lot of the things that we need to connect to make the slips work. So, our recommendation is work the existing leaseholder. And with that, I trust you read my staff report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions for staff? Matt, you want to start us off?
Eric, I had a question about the eight new slips. When they put the slips in front there, was there any problem in terms of permitting? Did that go through the proper process?
It did. It went through, to be honest with you, a little bit of a backwards format. And without knowing, or getting into deeply, how they ended up not going through the permitting process and beginning installation of the slips versus doing the permitting process, I don't know if they had bad information from our department from the get-go, or whether they just thought that they could do it. But they did end up having to go through coastal commission process. We essentially had to kind of put a stop, work on, I think, Rob, you're involved in that as well. Things were getting put in down there. We had, were led to believe that it was an installation of, basically, a replacement dock of what was there before. Historically, they had a fairly large dock there with boats tied up. And what ended up coming back down to go in was those slips. And so, we stopped that and ended up going through the full city and coastal commission permitting process, which did put it back a couple, I don't know, maybe two years. But it did kind of go backwards, but we got it back going forwards.
Okay. Christine?
You know, I don't have any questions right now. Thanks.
John?
Thanks for your report. Couple of questions to begin with. The determination of fair market value at the expiration of the Pipkin lease, how do we do that?
Fair market value of the leasehold?
Yes.
Interest? All of our leases on the currently, on the modern lease format, this one is an exception because it's an old Pickment lease. Basically, the appraised value of the lease site is done by a commercial appraiser, and the base lease is based on 8% of the appraised value, or, you know, the 75% of the five years of average rent paid. So, it's, and that's the bottom line starting point.
So, that would be done in 2018 when it's expired?
Yeah. When we go in to set a minimum rent, we'll go in with, do an appraisal at the time when it's most appropriate and then start there. And then, as the lease moves on into time, time will tell whether or not it kicks into that, because the percentage gross rents, hopefully, they start adding up above the minimum rent, and then it'll kick into that 75% of the five-year average.
So, because of the significant enormity of dollars to the lessee over the 50-year period that they had the lease, leasehold improvements are a huge part of that. And I think you mentioned that this lease site doesn't lend itself significantly to cost recovery, so to speak. Because of that, is there any other methodology the city can use or has used in these situations where major improvements may not be done or required when they're converted from Pipkin leases to the new master leases?
I don't, it's a great question. I don't know. In my tenure managing leases, we have not gone down alternative paths, an alternative path to go down potentially, and this starts getting into lease negotiations at some point, is rather than the concept of requiring somebody to do a large redevelopment and paying a bank over a number of years and recouping their costs, if they don't have a big bank payment in a lease site such as this, where there isn't a big redevelopment potential, it's not, you know, one that's a tear down that needs major overhaul, it's pretty much built out and just needs to be maintained, a higher lease fee structure going into it to where they're, instead of paying the bank, they're paying the city.
What's the current process that we use for determining lease rates for our master leases? In terms of increases and/or do they vary by lessee to lessee, or?
Obviously, we try to keep it fair and consistent and not make one more owners or different than the other. Again, it's based on 8% of the appraised value of the property, which is a square footage thing. And, you know, we have a standard percent gross table. Some lessies have negotiated lesser percents in the beginning when they had large developments and where they, or, I don't want to use subsidy, that's not the right word, but a relief, a rent relief in the beginning, and then where that ramps up, so they can get in front of the financial curve, where they just need to get established and get going. So, those sorts of things are items that could come into play and negotiate items in terms of, you know, maybe a higher percent for retail or a higher percent for slips versus return on investment.
So, there's no, you're not recommending anything else that can be done or recommended to recoup any of the dollars that have been earned to the individual during the 50-year period as a benefit, public benefit?
Again, there's not many options to do with that site, you know, with the private property. And we'll see with the tenant's advocate here, see if Kathy has anything to say in terms of the dry land part. We don't have control of the land. Part of it, again, we do, but not the entire dry land. So, there's no development potential to see that built out. They utilize that space pretty well with the commercial fishing and the fuel dock and everything all mixed in. There's not much room for doing anything different there.
Question would be, for projects such as engineering projects, et cetera, we go out for RFPs routinely in order to get best price. You're recommending that we do not use the RFP process for this. Just wondering why?
Primarily, again, because we don't control the land. If we peeled off that lease site, there's going to be, again, the lease, portion of the lease does cut through the fish market business to a small degree. Exactly where, we'll have to survey and find out. So, it does cut it, so there's an issue there. If, let's pretend it didn't, and we just owned, you know, the wharf, you know, from the revetment on down, and we want to take that over, there's access issues for that tenant to get across the backside of his private property that we've taken away, the slips. Where do we park it? Where do we get utilities? Where do we get all the things that we need to provide those slips? It gets pretty thorny since we don't control the land.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, and we continue past 11 o'clock. I need a second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? None? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries. A little formality there. Noah, anything else? Okay. All right. Thanks. Opening up for public comment. Kathy, thanks for sticking around. Sorry for the late hour.
Well, good evening, Mayor Arns and council members. My name is Kathy Novak from Novak Consulting. And I'm here this evening representing the DeGuermers for the lease sites number 102 and 102W. As staff indicated, the DeGuermers have done a significant improvements, provided many public benefits, as well as repair and maintenance work over the past several years. many public benefits, as well as repair and maintenance work over the past several years. In addition, I believe that staff has provided you with all the details on how this lease site fits within the city's lease management policies and other pertinent information. I don't want to be repetitive with all the information that staff has provided tonight. So, since your item is only to discuss the consideration of negotiating new lease with this current leaseholder versus an RFP, I will simply say on behalf of the DeGueremores that they support the staff recommendation for alternative number one, or, excuse me, A, which is to begin lease site negotiations with them. The DeGueremores continue to be good tenants in standing and have a proven track record of managing this lease site. In conclusion, they are looking forward to working with the city staff to negotiate another long-term lease for this site. And I think there was a couple of questions. I'm happy to answer more questions. It's late at night. I think Eric did a fine job of trying to describe the conditions of the lease site with the cut, with the lease cutting into the building and then having the water side. So, it makes it a very difficult lease site to try to do something. And then, as far as the land site goes, there's no real proposals right now to do any land site development. We have the parking lot down there in the middle, which satisfies the need for the new docks, and also for stacks, and also for the parking for the t-shirt shop and the restaurant. And that's an important part of this whole site, of being able to provide parking. So, not only do we provide parking down there for the shops that are there already, but the DeGueremores will always leave that parking lot open and do not chase the public away. So, if somebody's coming down just to visit the Embarcadero and not go specifically to that site, he allows people to park there. So, that's another added benefit on the land site. So, I'll be short tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Kathy. Thanks for sticking around. That concludes our public comment. Bring it back for discussion. Eric, Kathy, thanks for sticking around and providing the staff report. I'm in support of recommendation, alternative A. And Eric, thanks for bringing forward the work. Matt?
I would also support alternative A and look forward to starting to discuss this moving forward. Thanks.
John?
Same here.
I agree.
Okay. Take a motion to staff recommendation, alternative A.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Christine, second by John. All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Five-oh. Thanks, Kathy. Item D4, I, I'm just going to propose that we complete this at D4 and not continue on D5. Just, we'll just continue D5 for a little bit more discussion. I think D4 is probably something we can get through, and we should get through. Item D5 is consideration of adoption of Resolution Number 1715 rescinding the Resolution Number 3108 related to an intersection control at San Jacinto and Main Street and provide an update on city Caltrans activity regarding this intersection. Rob?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back in 2008, City Council passed Resolution 3108 on the consent agenda that resolved to put this intersection, Main-San Jacinto-Alder intersection, as low priority, and the city should not pursue this project, intersection improvements parenthetically at this time, nor should it be on any work list unless approved by the city. This intersection has history going back far beyond the circulation element of the last general plan, but I didn't go back to prehistory on it with many improvements thought about there. This intersection has the potential for, I think I counted, about 33 different turning movements in a matter of about 400 feet that you could possibly make between Highway One, Main Street, Alder Street, and San Jacinto, all within this tight period. So, and there's many modes of traffic that go through there. There is bike, pedestrian, automobiles, and our transit vehicles also use that intersection. So, I believe it does deserve some look at it. And I think this, by rescinding the previous resolution, does allow us some, a little bit more flexibility to take a look at this, at this intersection. Looking at it, this action doesn't have a financial, physical impact, but a detailed intersectional analysis could cost $60,000 if we were to build a roundabout there, about $3 million. If we were to go back to the '88 general plan and put a grade-separated overcrossing there, I think San Luis is doing one for 15 or 17 million. This is a little bit smaller, so maybe 10 million for a grade separation at that point. With that, I'll conclude my staff report and turn it back to council.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Rob. Appreciate the diligence on this. Any questions for staff? Seeing none? Public comment? None? This is a procedure that, you know, was necessary. Thanks for doing that. Unless there's any other discussion, I'd make a motion for staff recommendation to adopt Resolution 1715.
Second.
So, we have a, so, we have a motion and a second by Noah? Oh, we're getting at it here. So, any discussion?
Yeah, yeah, just briefly, because, you know, there are a lot of expense, options here, and it's complicated. But, and Caltrans doesn't seem to want to really get that involved. But I think we do have some potential partners with the school district. And I do know our Public Works Advisory Board has a whole new composition. One of the members has done, put a lot of thought into analysis of how to engineer some more elegant and less expensive alternatives. So, I hope we'd work with the bike committee, the school district, and the Public Works Advisory Board to start to kind of wrestle with this about next steps and thinking about budget and realistic solutions. Yes.
And our SLOC partners? Yeah.
And ultimately, Caltrans will need to be involved in this because they own much of the right of way.
Yep. Okay.
And I really will forward this to elementary school because I do think it's a sad state that, I mean, it's in a staff report now that everyone has read in the city that says that, you know, the driver behavior is especially bad during Delmar drop-on and drop-off and pickup times. And I think that the school, really, we should probably address that with the population there. Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
That is a quote from Traffic Engineering.
I know, but at least you didn't put in the graphic that apparently he received. All right. I'll follow up.
Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries. Five-oh. That, I'll move to continue item D5 for...
Okay. For discussion?
Yeah.
You made a motion, and then it was seconded for discussion. I mean, can't we just get through it? I don't think it's going to take that much time.
You know what? I thought about it too, but I know, you know, as late as it is, it could be more discussion than, you know, than it needs.
Really?
We have a couple of light agendas coming up. It's, this is, you know, something we can do.
Okay. All right. I'm just giving you that option because I know it's the second time we've continued it, so.
Yeah. All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries.
I'm sorry. You know what? John seconded my, I think.
Okay. So, I know we're ready to conclude, and I had a future agenda item on water conservation measures, but Noah, you had made some comments about some water conservation at PWA. So, I'd been, you know, there's been some conversations with some of the PWA members and, you know, are we doing the appropriate measures for water conservation? So, I was going to, you know, request having something like that come back, but your discussion, are we having that topic discussed already?
I understand it's an update at PWA, but I'm right in line with you. I was going to call for the same sort of an update coming back to us.
Yeah. Just having a water conservation measure, you know, come to council through our Public Works Advisory Board, some of the issues. It'd be nice for them to discuss the water allocation offset program. I know there's been some questions about turf removal and some businesses that would want to do that. And then, water conservation awareness for restaurants and hotels was another discussion. It would be great to send that to PWA and have them go through that discussion and send some recommendation back to us and what we can do to help with that. And do I have support for that?
Oh, certainly, yes.
Do we have unanimous support? Okay. That's always a good thing. Okay. Thanks. Anything else?
I do. Briefly. I have a future agenda item.
Yes.
I would like us to come back briefly, a quick staff report, to consider appointing two council members to participate in planning the Moray Fourth of July this year to help out in the transition year between the city staff and the community to ensure that it's successful, because it's a big event for us and a community event. But just, I think it would help to have two council members link to that event and to support staff and the city and the community in planning a great event. So, do I have support for that?
Yes.
Is that unanimous?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Great. And maybe we could, if possible, to have it in two weeks, it would just, hopefully, just be a quick appointment. Oh, I heard five. Okay. Thank you. So, because we need to get going, so it's just a quick appointment, if that's all right. Thank you.
Yep. Okay.
Thanks.
All right, folks. Thanks for that. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.